He's number four on Google.
Oh, really?
The three above him, they're horrible, but they're just the big boys and they just got better ranking. But he's number four on Google. If you search like Diablo four planner map or whatever. Freaking seven, eight hundred bucks a day.
Well, the thing is with bad revenue too, it's more about how long your bounce rate, how long are people spending on your site. So in some ways it's better to be lower ranked than just like Reddit and stuff.
Oh, really?
Which is what he's done anyway. So that's great.
Yeah. So this is the number.
So does the clock die?
It it actually connects to Colorado and sets its own time.
But he's he gets feedback and he just adds it.
Yeah.
Push notifications to like fifty thousand.
The nuclear clock in Colorado sends out a signal.
He just every time somebody says something.
Sinks to it as long as it does it.
Always improving.
Technology is great when it works.
Yeah.
He'll be making ten fifteen grand a month on that.
Because of the nature of it, it always dies. We notice it right before a meeting.
He's got it pretty much done for to compete against mutual. People are complaining about it. People hate it because they're nickel and diamond and it's a death.
Oh, how was it? Oh.
Ooh.
He's already ready.
We gotta fix that because it's supposed to mute it.
He's gonna release pretty soon.
Um.
Pretty proud of him.
I'm not even sure. I okay.
Hot mic.
What?
Well, I put it on break, but it's got a hot mic. Hey, check now, will you? I muted those. It's supposed to mute it automatically. When we're on break.
The last few minutes.
Is it now hot?
I put mute, but he's checking.
Is it? How long has it been hot?
I don't know. I had it on. I had it on break and it's supposed to be on mute when you're on break.
Did it messed up?
Did it? Does it record it and put it on there or?
Yeah, that goes right onto YouTube.
Still hot.
How are you?
That's still hot?
Still hot.
Well, how is that? Okay, so that's. You know what I could do? Let's try this.
Very distracting.
That's beautiful. Are you kidding me? I want to be fishing right there.
That's me. I want to be thrown by a fly right there.
It's funny. We were at the kids pond with Mike, Henry and Harlow.
Did you get to? You went up there?
Yeah.
Saturday?
These like sixteen seventeen year olds, just these old kids with their fly rods out there. They're just having a little fun.
Says right on the sign, twelve year olds or younger.
They were playing with their best one.
Did I catch anything?
They were.
They have fun?
We wanna um.
Have they fished before?
Yeah, that's usually that's what.
First fishing was at the trout farm up in Weaver County. Then we went to take the ice fishing. It was too hard.
Yeah.
It's a good thirty seconds away.
Did you guys catch fish?
Yeah.
Yes.
Me too, because he.
Wait, did he start over and?
As you walk in.
So.
Kill it and then you'll start over.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Lead it and start over.
Yeah.
You can't do that.
Yeah. Hey, you've got some different glasses with the um stuff here set up.
Okay, so let's do.
I'm done now for the summer. Yeah.
How fun is that?
I hit I hit break before I even turn it off.
Stinks. It's hot and dirty and smelly, but.
Is the humidity? Is the humidity bad?
What's that?
I thought Terry was gone. When do you go?
After this.
Oh, okay.
Talked about the last item on the agenda too.
Okay.
See if I need to stay that late. No, I'm trying to get out of here.
Okay.
I need this one, so.
Perfect. I know too. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, John. Um, we're just a little after nine o'clock. Would like to welcome you to our Iron County Commission meeting this Monday, the twenty sixth day of June, two thousand twenty-three. And we'll begin today's meeting with an opening prayer that'll be offered by um Sam Sam Woodall, our deputy county attorney, and uh and following the prayer will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Rich Wilson, our county engineer.
Father in heaven, we thank thee for this day, grateful for the blessings we've received, for good moisture for this country in which we live, grateful for the process that governs our community, pray that thou would guide us and that we might be effective. We love thee and thank thee for thy son, and offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Okay, we'll go to approval of our our minutes. Uh, for what date are those minutes, John?
Twelfth.
June twelfth. If somebody'd like to make a motion?
I'd move for approval of the minutes of of our meeting, June twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved to second to approve the minutes and with some minor changes. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll go to approval of claims. I'll entertain a motion for the pay the bills.
I would uh move for approval of claims for payments from June twelfth, twenty twenty-three to June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to departmental reports. Um, Terry, building and zoning.
Sorry, I need to get here sooner. Trying to get things done up before I run away for a while.
You're probably a little chunky, aren't you?
How long do you get to go?
Two weeks.
Awesome.
Have you ever taken a two week vacation?
No, I have not.
Wow.
I don't know what to do. I really honestly, I don't know what to do.
I'm gonna ask ask at least Mike, what do I do for two weeks on vacation?
I've never gone two weeks in a row, but I.
If you want to call us, if you want us to call you like the first few days, just to ease you into it, we could.
You can call Larry though. I will. I will forward mine to his and.
I actually called Larry this last week and he sounds just like you. He goes, Paul, what are you talking about?
I know you called me back just after you talked to him and I says, but I will transfer my phone calls to him. So if you want to feel lonely, call Larry.
You would never know you weren't talking to you.
No, you would, because I'm gonna be in Alaska. I leave this afternoon to go to Las Vegas, fly to Vancouver tomorrow and get on the boat Wednesday, so.
Fun. Good for you.
And I will be back sometime in two weeks.
Perfect.
Uh, but on with this, the stuff you come to hear me about though. Uh, the first page on this, we'll kind of go over that one. The numbers, you're all aware. I was, we did slow down just a little bit. I think mainly because of winter time, we had an actual winter with water, which slowed construction down. We're starting to pick back up. Numbers are showing that, so. We've issued two hundred and forty building permits year to date compared to three hundred and two. So we're down sixty permits. And that is our Jan- January, February, and March, those numbers right there that were slowed down, I think, because of that, because we get into our May numbers and stuff, they started to pick up some. We've completed two hundred and fifty-four project reviews for this year. Uh, and we've completed one thousand five hundred and eighty-four inspections this year. So we're still running a lot with those numbers. We've still got a lot of big stuff going on, a lot of inspections. There's still stuff picking up that we're seeing it. Our code enforcement, Joe's been doing a fabulous job to try to stay on top of it. It still covers a lot of area that he gets behind, but we're still trying to work with our bigger ones. We've got quite a few, uh, thirty-one seven day notices. He sent out seven for seven days. Our process, we'll send out a seven day notice to give them seven days notice to get back with us to let us know where they're at and what's going on. Uh, so we sent out thirty-one of those this year so far that he's been working with, talked to, and got him in somewhere in the process of getting stuff cleaned up and or building permits.
Cedar Valley Acres, some of those look pretty good and some of them don't so much. So do you keep moving forward on that process?
Yes, we are there. Yeah. We've got half a dozen right there along especially along the road that we've got that we're working with. Uh, our biggest one, Fred, with Porta Potties, I've been working with him. He started moving a lot of his stuff. And he's had some vehicle problems, so I'm working with him to get that one taken care of out there. So we're still working a lot there. That's our, that's a lot of our focus is Cedar Valley. We'll send him out to Burl some to get some of those outside areas to keep going there. But yeah, we're still working with that to keep that going. So we're keeping up.
Good.
As as good as we can, as fast as we can with it, so. And then he's got eleven thirty day notice, gives him thirty days to come into a uh with an agreement to work on a plan to get it organized and cleaned up. Or the after that, then we start with Dave now up in the attorney's office office to start proceedings to go through court if we have to. And we don't have one here. We know we've had a couple that's gone to court that they've been working with. We've got some compliance there. So the Sam and David have been great to work with there in that code enforcement. Where we struggled before, we've got some good help there and making sure we're getting things covered the right way when we send that notices out on that. Uh, budget, fairgrounds, we are gonna need to look at that in the fall instead of what we're gonna do. We've got some things going on there that I don't think we planned on upfront when we started last fall, when we started taking over. But we're getting things done. We're looking good. Uh, Thane was on the agenda for later on. He said I can be here, but I think he looks better in a dress shirt and pants today, so I'm gonna let him get up and talk to you later in the agenda.
Terry on the fairgrounds, just, you know, something that I think you probably aware of, but the the stucco on that building, some of the cap, wall caps, and some of those need some attention, right?
Yes, and that's one of the projects Thane's been looking at with Susan and them to see what's out. We need to go. We've been looking into that with Maryland and stuff, so we.
We probably need to look at that at budget time to what we need to do with that, because we don't want to lose the stucco if it's.
No.
Get moisture in or whatever.
And that's probably one of my items. What we need to talk about is we need to go through there in the next couple of months and get a good list and start getting some ideas on numbers for that type of issue so we can work it in the budget. Because that has been one of the concerns and the roof on that is still leaking some in areas. So we do need to start looking at a couple of those because that's gonna get.
In the corners, right?
Exactly in the corners. That's gonna be a big budget item for improvements. We'll need to start looking at on the budget as to what we need to do, but that building is needs some TLC. The restrooms need a little bit of uh loving with them.
We probably need to get some more, some better ventilation in those restrooms.
Probably so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's why I say we need to walk through it with the commissioners and with Susan and us and see what we want to do up there to keep it up. And we know that building has needed some work with the stucco and stuff to try to get that. And we've had a couple look at it with us. Uh, Tigers looked at it with us to kind of give us a few ideas.
Yeah, I've talked to him a couple of times about it.
On that, but yes, we have got that on on site for that.
He said that there was some uh paint that we could paint the roof.
Yes. There is. I we need to look into that a little bit more. I've seen several. I don't know that I'm totally comfortable with that, but we need to look at something especially on that roof.
He said there's some new paints paint that that works better.
So we'll look at that. Another item is is Thane's got the bid for the RFP for sill coating the parking lot. He'll present that as the budget item to be moved there, contract on that one. Uh, the small pavilion is down. There was a a gust of wind that blew it down.
They said three of the legs were totally rotted out.
It was bad. So the small pavilion.
We're lucky it didn't just come down by itself.
Yeah, so the pavilion is down, the concrete is out, it's kind of leveled for sod to go now. Uh, Susan called me Thursday.
She's working on that, isn't she?
But another option I thought about later is why don't we have Brad just go pick up about six hundred and fifty square foot of sod and the county pay for that and put it down?
That's fine.
Instead of hiring out, because the sprinklers are in place. We just need to get them readjusted.
Yeah.
Because I think they're a full spray, full head spray. I think if we just look at.
That would go over that area, I think.
Yeah, because I don't think we need to add any more. We'll need a little more uh care with the the dirt before we put sod down. But Brad could go out and pick up that sod and lay it down. It's only about six hundred and fifty square feet of sod.
Yeah.
Be fine.
And so that one, I think sod right now is less than a dollar a square foot for it. So if he can do it and get it laid down, you're looking less than seven hundred dollars.
Could Thane go over and help him when he does that, do you think?
Yes, I think I think so.
Look at his face.
Like he says, I'm gone for two, the next two weeks, so I don't want to get him too tied up and lose appointments. But yes, I think for that little bit, we could get him there. It wouldn't take much if we could get Brad to get it picked up and get it over there. I think I think we can get Thane to help.
In the minutes, then you're.
Shaking his head, so. But that's okay. That's what we're for. We want to help. We know what it looks like. So he's done a lot of the dig out. He knows what was there as far as concrete.
Yes.
So I think we can get him to help with that and get it cleaned up.
Cool.
And put that down. So maybe we can talk to Susan where I'm leaving this afternoon. Might need to have you work with Susan and suggest that because it would be cheaper than putting an RFP out and costing extra where the sprinklers are already hit there. We had them on all four corners. They're full spray. We just got to readjust them to spray around.
Yep.
And there I think we can make it work.
Have to put new heads in.
Yeah.
The the full spray ones.
Yeah, full spray. And the and the ones there, we might just have to adjust them.
Yeah.
So on that one. So that's the little building there. Uh, concrete, we've got one bid already between the two sets of bleachers. I'm working on two more. I've got Nate gonna get me bids, two more or three more bids this week, so we can start on that between the two bleachers. One of the estimates was just under seven thousand dollars for the scraping down the gravel, leveling that out and getting it ready and putting the concrete back in. So we're probably looking around that neighborhood to put the concrete in between the two bleachers.
Before the fair?
Yeah, well, I think we can because concrete, it's not like your grass. It doesn't have to get established. Seven days, we can get foot traffic back on there and be fine because we're not taking vehicles over. So I think we can get it down. By the middle of July, we could have a couple of weeks, because our activities don't really start in earnest until August there.
August.
So if we even have it done by the first weekend on first of last of July.
Well, we could rope that off and take them up and over.
Because even if we have it done by the first of August, we can still have some time there to get it set up and be fine. So I think that's in the works. We'll get bids, hopefully get bids this week, and then we get back as to what we need to do on that one.
Cool.
Uh, I think that's the big things at the fairgrounds. I'm out of order, I think, a little bit. But we did get two new planning commission commissioners appointed. Appreciate that. They were both there to the last commission, uh, planning commission meeting. They got through the open meetings law. Sam scared them off just a little bit, hopefully not too bad with that. So we've got, we will have a full quorum now for planning commission.
Oh, great.
And all the good ones. So we've got some good ones there. Uh, Quichapaw Lake, we're working on that flood around there, trying to get elevations and a new ordinance set there for building out around Quichapaw. And that one, we'll be going back to planning commission next Thursday for that one. Uh, we're working on a moderate income housing per state legislation. A couple of years ago, years ago, they put in moderate income housing. Uh, requirements that the counties and cities have to come up with a plan for moderate income housing. Can't see my eyes on that one. So we're working on a report. Reed put in a a plan together a couple of a year ago that we're trying to get a report together. We've started, that's where the R four K. Uh, in the zoning come town homes are coming from is this requirement through state legislation. So we're working a little bit on that one there. Uh, legislation added four hundred lines of code change to the land management. So we've got a lot of things and Sam's been up on that a little bit with the land use requirements legislators have done there. Uh, we've got Thane full in full swing with maintenance. I don't, I don't know what he's done. He just says he's busy. I think he's just telling me a bunch of stuff, but that's okay. We got the four H shed done. He'll get with you this week, Paul. They'll get the shelves over there to get that shed in for the four H. It turned out good there. Uh, he's got the bids for the sill coat, pavilions down. Uh, he's working on getting the new fence around the vis- uh visitor centers. He's talked to Maria a couple of times about that. They're trying to get the final details for that. Uh, the fence is done up around the vendor vendor area in the parking lot at the fairgrounds.
Boy, it's beautiful.
It does.
Y'all crew did a beautiful.
They did fabulous job.
Great job.
So we've got that. That I think that's gonna be a big improvement to keep that area separated, keep cars out of there.
Way better than the Jersey barriers.
Yes, with mud on them from the.
So we like that. Uh, uh, we're, and Thane's done a lot with the CJC, the Children's Justice Center, to help get them taken care of. I don't know if you've heard from Wendy on your touring of the South. But Thane's put some time in there. Hopefully they're comfortable there.
Excellent.
Because he's he's tried to put some time in there to help get things there at the CJC.
Perfect.
Uh, we've got, we had one drawing from engineers for our parking lot around our building. We sent it back to get a couple revisions because we missed a couple of the drains, the irrigations that goes through our back parking lot to get that in and surveyed in so we can make sure that we can get that parking lot shot to grade with the irrigation that goes through there.
Southwest field irrigation goes through that property?
Yes.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they've got a main line that goes right through the middle of that back parking lot. So we've got to keep that in there. We're trying to shoot. What's that?
How big is it?
Eight inch, I think.
What about? So what when is is that gonna happen, do you think?
Hope it will. We're hoping that we'll have the plat- the drawing back this week and then start with an RFP. We're hoping by fall, middle mid fall, we'll get something is what we're hoping. We get some prices in, then we're gonna have to see what we've got to do.
Yeah.
On the money budget there, so. Uh, generator with the public safety, we've talked a little bit about. We put the block wall up. They're still complaining that it's noisy. We've talked to one company, an electrical company about getting it moved, relocating to see what we're gonna be into. We haven't got any numbers back on that one. We may need to look at relocating that out a little bit away from the building, but we'll we'll deal with that and see what we run into on that one. Uh, that's the the notes there. If we go to that big page, you can see our numbers, twenty twenty-two on that top section. Twenty twenty-two, our permits for this time of the year was two hundred and forty-eight and that first bottom column gray compared to this year was a hundred and fifty. Uh, single family, if we look at that one, we had twenty twenty-two was a hundred and twenty-nine to twenty twenty-three. That was our biggest drops because of they didn't want to start in the wintertime houses. But I think our numbers are starting to pick back up there. If we go down to the very bottom, uh, we go, the first one is building permits, twenty twenty-two was three hundred and two at this time of the year. And or last year was two, three hundred and two and this year was a hundred and ninety-one. So we are down there, but we're, like you said, we're starting to see numbers come back in and stuff with that. We've got another big solar prod- uh solar company that come in, visited with Reed on Friday, that's got a purchase power agreement already signed, contract signed with the Pacific Corp. To build a sour uh solar plant out in the Borough Valley north of Newcastle. So that might start this year.
I believe they're on the agenda.
And their conditional use permit will be on in on the August first meeting. So that will be a big revenue right there to bring some of this up, to keep us running a lot more with that one. And then we've got four other solar, the existing solar farms that are wanting to put battery backup storage onsite, which will be a big project with those four too on that one.
Is there more out on Lund Highway? You know, they talked about.
Yes, we haven't got applications and stuff for that. Appaloosa Solar is the one that they're building right now. They've got one more phase planned around that, that they're working on the conditional use permit now, I think. And then they're talking another phase two, but phase two of Appaloosa.
So will that impact with our roads? They'll do some more of the road work out on there?
I can't remember exactly how far up, but yes, that would get us some more road.
Want to go to Horse Hollow.
Yeah, they it would take it up to horse. It's pretty close to Horse Hollow is where this next phase would wrap up to it, it sounds like. But they're working on stuff for that one. And then Reed mentioned one thing this morning as I was getting ready to leave. He wants to visit a little bit about a PID, Public Infrastructure District. This is put in by legislation and he's got one company group that's gonna be in to visit with him tomorrow.
That's the city council debate on that.
Yeah.
Topic a while back in Cedar City.
Yeah, but that's legislators, state legislators did some stuff there and give them the option. So they want to visit and Reed would like to visit to see if you've got any one way or the other with that. I know. So Reed's not quite sure, but he wants to visit and.
Councilman Melling's here. He could probably bring something to speed a little bit.
Makes me a little nervous.
So that's where we're at there. Uh, any questions as far as that, as far as that aside? Uh, and Jennifer didn't come in yet, but the very last item on the agenda under personnel, we've talked a little bit about a couple of weeks ago, about getting Nate put as my assistant building official.
Oh, yes.
While I am gone, well, while.
So that would be approved today.
And that's what I just, I didn't know if you needed me to come back to visit a little bit about that.
Why don't you just do it now?
Because what it is.
Hell of a fishing.
What we're what we're doing is I need somebody that's put in as an assistant building official that can make the decisions and somebody will recognize that.
While you're gone.
While I'm gone. Yeah, if I go on vacation, it will give him that okay to make a decision as far as codes and if something comes up. To say, okay, here's how the code is and to interpret it.
Yeah.
And make that decision. And I would like it to go through the commission to say that commissions recognize him as assistant building official.
He's got all the certs that you do.
He's got his, he's got his residential. He's got all of his residential, so he's good there. Commercial right now, we don't have too much going on. I don't, I've tried to take care of that before I leave. But if there's any questions, he can still answer it because he is a certified building inspector through the state.
Yeah.
So that's what I want to look at that. And I know you'll, I don't know if you want to do that here or if you want Jennifer to present that because she's got the numbers we talked about. We already have Lester on budget for this year when he left us in March. His was already budgeted for him being that assistant. We took part of Thane's budget out of Lester's and kept it under still. And the little bit that we would raise Nate's wages would still keep us under what we had in budget and employee budget for the year for this this year. So we've talked a little bit. I've talked to Jennifer a little bit. She looks at it and she thinks we're still under what the budget would be and we would not have to do a budget judgment adjustment for increase on salaries would still be under with Lester leaving. If we give that Nate Nate that next, I think it was step is what we talked about to take him up a little bit for this position.
Okay.
So. Uh, so if you need me back, I can come back.
Get out of here.
But.
Get the heck out of here.
I've got got to stop at Family Dollar. My one commercial project, I got to stop at Family Dollar to see if they got it finished up over the weekend because I was there Friday and they were this close. And I said, I'll come in Monday morning then after I visit with the commissioners and see how close we are.
Terry, before you go, can I bend your ear in the hall a couple of minutes? I just need to ask you a couple of questions about a different project.
Yeah, huh? Yeah, anything else? I know, I know, I know my numbers on the building permits are down a little bit. I know that's a little and we.
You need to get out there and sell it more.
I know. I need to get out and sell it. I need to get, I need to get Rich to do more and bring more to me and get Joe to do more for me.
Heck with the free, heck with the free market. Just get it done.
That's right. So so we are, we've got Joe out there. I should say Joe's been a hand help helpful there with me to go through and catch some of these. go through and catch some of these projects that we haven't been able to get out and about because we're still running, staying busy enough to keep us, keep us going. So, okay. Anything else I need to have my guys do while I'm gone? Okay. You've got the office phone number. You can try to text or call.
Or call Larry.
Or call Larry. All right. Thanks.
Thanks. Appreciate it. All right.
It's like rich.
I got a, our engineer, Rich Wilson.
I, I was gonna say, look at the clock. I gave my time to Terry. Thank you. So we can get cars to, to start to, uh, you know, telling people what they could do with their land and, and that would drive the building permits, right? All right. We, we've had a busy three months, but I felt really good about the turnout. We had a lot of concern about flooding that was going to come, that we were able to stay ahead of. Even though we had a few problems, it's this interesting thing about water. Water will show up in a location one year to create grief and problems. And then we'll fix that or we'll move that and it'll show up somewhere else. It just has a way of finding and pointing out that it's in charge and it'll go where it wants to go. But we didn't have any, uh, homes that I'm aware of that ever, that flooded as a result of the spring runoff. And we were able to keep our maintenance up and, and move along. We, we did have a couple of trouble areas, but like I said, they were, they were not ones to that we could forecast because they weren't on, on our radar, just simply because there hadn't been problems before. But I, I think we did really well with all the help we got, uh, from Commissioner Cousins, from, uh, the road department. I know they were pretty busy out in the Hamelin Valley because of the situations that happened there. We have gotten a little, um, I've gotten several comments of praise from the public that they were very happy that what they were worried about didn't come to fruition.
Well, what, Rich, while you're on that.
Yeah.
I just want to thank, you know, Western Rock, especially publicly, we had those two nights, a Thursday and a Friday night where those banks were calving really fast. And it was kind of a nine on one. And I called Anthony with Western and he was there with his nine, what was it? Nine eighty-eight? Loader, thing's huge. And he showed up and then DeMills, you know, Blake, well, not Blake, but Dana, Dana DeMille was there. And then I called, um, Jeff Hunter with Cedar City, you know, corp and just said, hey, Jeff, we need some of that rock that you've been screening. And he said, take all you need. We used a lot of it, you know? And I asked him later if it was okay. And he said, yeah, that's fine. But, but just appreciate everybody that jumped in and helped last minute on some of those. It was scary. I mean, you know, when you, when you're losing a bank fast and, and there's equipment, these gravel pits that could be flooded and it's, it's, it's kind of spooky, but we, it was good. So we appreciate it.
It is. And that's one of those cases I was referring to that just moved along because we had plenty of capacity there. It just wanted to change its course and had to be forced back into the banks. Um, and I did, I did want to thank Western Rock. In fact, they're still being very generous with that waste concrete. We've been hauling. Anytime I call, they said, just come and get it, Rich. Just come and get it. I also want to thank, uh, Ray Bullock. As I was looking for, uh, truckers, I reached out to several that just have, uh, are busy elsewhere. They, they were unable to come, but, but Ray was in town and had just brought some trucks in and he jumped right on getting us some hauling there behind Monarch Meadows. And I appreciate the, the speed in which Ray just stopped what he was headed for and, and came and helped us. So we do have a great community support. And I know next time it'll, it'll be Phil Smith or Clark or someone else. Because they do sit, take pride in the community. And I want to reach out and say that. We've been busy with, uh, road determinations. It seems like that's a constant, uh, and it's a good process that we have, I think, that, that we are able to treat everyone equitably and, and go through the process. And it's appreciated that senior staff is able to get together and do that. If not every, twice a month, we get a month, at least once a month, we go through, uh, road determinations. So we're looking forward to the summer. And now that we've got a little bit of breather, we've been working on, uh, preparation for the monsoon season and making sure I'm going to, uh, I decided I, I'm going to walk the ditch like Commissioner Cousins did, particularly from forty-eight hundred north. Cause I can see most of it the other direction. We've got some drone footage of the, of the ditch that's, uh, helpful. Sometimes you just have to be right down in it to see what's going on.
Rich, on that, I, over the weekend, I was out behind Flying L just looking at that ditch, just out of curiosity to see how much sediment had built up. The, the, um, irrigation structure on the west end, it's, it had eroded quite a bit right there. Are you aware of that? Right there by Gemini Meadows? It's, it seems like it's got a leak and it's eroding. We probably need to look at that.
Irrigation, you mean the, uh?
Concrete ditch behind Flying L, you know, the concrete structure.
Right there in Gemini, the, the.
Just on the north end, it's eroded pretty bad. There was some rip rap and stuff that washed away, but we probably ought to take a look at that.
No, I haven't seen that yet.
Just drive into Gemini and walk over the edge and just right there, just look at it.
And I'll, I'll work with Brent Hunter who's, who's been on top of that. And we, we can get some more of that.
So they are using that structure, it looks like then.
Yes. Yes. What happened was they, they had thought that the, the, uh, the, this additional water was the issue. And Brent told me what happened was they found a tire in there.
Oh.
And they finally got inside of it. They, they pulled out a fifteen inch tire that had gotten stuck. So it wasn't really, it was capable of handling the water. It just couldn't do it through a, through a.
Tire.
Yeah, yeah. It was like trying to, to breathe through a lifesaver. So that was, uh, that's what went on there. So we've had, had quite a, it just seems like, uh, some, some days I do a lot and doesn't seem to get anything done, but I know I've been busy all day. So are there any questions, commissioners? Oh, I just wanted to mention, uh, Grant has worked out great in our department. I've been able to, and I think, uh, sharing him with the road department when needed. Uh, I was talking to Justin on Thursday and he said, you know, it's, it's great that Grant can come up and do our signage and post our roads when we're working and and they appreciate that.
The fairgrounds too. He's working on some, uh, signage for the fairgrounds. We appreciate him doing that.
And we're gonna get that cross channel done there and the one out and, uh, I've talked to Chris Archibald about getting that sidewalk cut and so we can get the drainage there in Three Peaks, uh, accomplished again before the monsoon season. That was always what my promise was that we'd try to.
Peak view?
Peak view.
Yeah.
How are we looking down there where the blowout happened at Brent Hunter's farm? Are we?
That's what you saw. We were.
Cause he, did Curtis back? I haven't been down to look at it.
He's there now.
Is he okay?
He's there now. He's dressing it up. Uh, Brent's got his, his water line back in and what we did to, uh,
So we, we get a good, we get a good monsoon going through there. You think we're gonna be okay? We got it dressed up?
Yes, and, and we're protecting that water line further. We've, it's been lowered. It's lowered three feet further. And we just put, uh, waste blocks as thrust blocks against it, uh, stacked up to both sides of it. So.
To protect it. Good.
Okay, very good. Thanks for the report. Appreciate all your work, Rich. Oh, oh, what, and we need to talk about, um, there's an issue with, uh, stormwater off, out of Red Creek and Little Creek down there by the freeway that I talked to you about. We need to talk, so.
Yes, yes.
I have a gentleman out there. We needed to look at maybe running the drainages down the, down the barrel pit and then down to that recharge basin. So. You know, I'll talk, I'll call you later.
Yeah, you, I mean, I've been talking with Donnie Roberts and he's putting in, by the way, he's putting in a couple more, uh, gravel. Well, they're gonna be like that, but they're also going to, uh, uh, take the, the acceleration off of the water. There'll be deceleration. There'll primarily be deceleration ponds. And that will help to keep the gravel from getting all the way down to twenty-two fifty.
Oh, yeah. Good.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. All right. Where are we at? Parks and Rec, Maria.
Good morning.
Morning.
Condolences for your father-in-law. Sorry to hear that. I haven't talked to you since that all happened.
It's been, it's been a rough week.
Yeah. Anyway, um, so usually I do tourism parks, uh, but it came across as just parks only. So that's all I have for you today.
Oh, good.
But I do have my tourism works report. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, I know we did mail it out to you.
Go ahead and report on that too, can't we, John?
Yeah.
I don't have a.
Oh, that's, that's okay. You want to mention some.
She's had too much going anyway this week.
In the family. But, um, I will, um, to be honest, uh, I want to make sure when I do my tourism report that I do you know, a more in-depth report because I know you did request something, um, a little more uh, of me last time. And I want to make sure that I'm doing it right and doing it at a nice level. So today we're gonna just talk about Parks and Rec, which is, um, a great thing because, uh, we are definitely, we're definitely busy in the Parks and Rec department. Um, the weather has definitely had an impact on everything that has happened in our department. So reservations and collections to date are about a little over, uh, forty-eight hundred dollars, which is down about twenty-five percent over this time last year. And weather has everything to do with that. You know, it just hasn't really, our winter, hard winter, hasn't really warmed up. Um, and so, which is okay for us because we are doing a lot to, um, you know, repair and we were not able to get Wood Ranch open in, usually we try to open it up in May and that wasn't gonna happen. So, um, so speaking of Wood Ranch, Wood Ranch.
Uh, good, good job.
Uh, on.
It still has S, by the way. We need to get that.
Where?
On the website or on, uh, Iron County website. There's still some S's there.
Problems with that.
About that.
We've asked them about that and they keep saying it's on us. And we're like, we don't know how it's on us. So.
It's the IT does our website, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Information on that.
So it's the Google calendar, which they say is in our control, which is true, but they set it up and they have.
Information is on there. Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll get on that. We'll keep, we will keep on though.
I know. Thank you.
Um, but on, um, uh, May twenty-second, um, the, the dyke, the, the dam on Kids Pond, Kids Pond was breached. Um, and so we worked with, um, Bryce worked with the road department and the engineer, engineering department to get that fixed. Um, and so big thanks to them. Um, I know how busy they are. This has been a crazy time for them and to have to go up there and fix that. Um, but we pro, we will have to go back and do some work on that eventually. Um, for right now it is, it is a good fix and should be, but we gotta work on the spillway. The fence around the spring and around the front of the park is also damaged by the snow load. Um, we're gonna hopefully get the gel crew up there to help us fix that. Um, we do need to have that fence fixed around the spring if we're gonna do our sanitary, uh, survey, which is part of Department of Water Quality. We have to make sh- you have to make sure there's no veget- you know, vegetation and the animals can't get into that spring area. So, and I, we want to just make sure we're providing clean water. So Five Mile, we've been working, we've been trying to get up to Five Mile. Um, Ryan Riddle did burn the slash piles over the winter time. And, um, and that will help us so that we can do some more slash, uh, next winter. Mike Worthing has put out the RFP for the engineer on the water, um, on the water system. And we're just waiting for the replies on that. I am extremely hesitant to open Five Mile until we have a water system in place just because you know, people are gonna be up there with their briquettes and their barbecues and whatnot. And we.
Need water.
We need a water. So, but, uh, we do have, uh, an SUU crew working up there right now, which is gonna help us get a lot of the group area, which we.
In talking to Mike, I, I was just gonna tell you, um, he didn't think that we would get it open this year. He thought probably next year, so. Darn it.
But we want to open it and we want to open it right.
Yeah, exactly.
So having that SUU crew up there right now is a big help because we can get that group area going.
Oh, yeah.
And we have had some, we have not been able to keep employees. So we've hired two, two seasonal, um, and two custodians we've gone, that we've gone through. And now we're in the process of hiring again. Which kind of hinders our progress in many ways, but, um, we're keep, we're gonna keep plugging along. Bryce is amazing and Kayden, who we've just hired is really good. So we're excited about that. Uh, Three Peaks, we're still working on removing dead trees. There's quite a few out there that we need to get out. We're also replacing a, a lodge pole fence there at the entrance, um, which may be a staging area at one point for, um, Mike's desert trail. And so, um, kind of waiting to see what he can, what he can do with a grant that way. We're still needing to coordinate the clearing of that acreage at Three Peaks for the big championship race for the mountain biking. Um, but again, I huge appreciation to our road department for any assistance that they provided and can, can continue to provide us. So, but yeah, that's a big race. I mean, we're gonna be looking at a thousand riders plus twenty-five, at least twenty-five hundred support people and parents. And it comes at a time of year where we're just, we can use that business. So it's a big deal for us economically.
Yeah.
So. And that's really all I have for you today. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Maria.
Thanks, Maria.
Bruce, uh, Public Works, Bruce Sanderson.
Morning commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Thank you, sir. Okay, maybe we can, uh, I guess start with, thanks for letting me come here. Um, tell you what we've been doing. We've had an awful lot going on. Maybe we can start with landfill. So we just finished putting in three more concrete structures right at the scale, just off the side of the scale house for, uh, small loads. When we've got down into that smaller pit, we've just tried to, we're trying to eliminate the small traffic going down there with the increase in trucks and it's just so much cleaner for people to come and dump them in dumpsters. And then we'll haul it down there. Keeps it safer and cleaner for people. If there's a big truck and trailer, we send them down. But if there's gonna be just somebody in their car or a pickup, we don't even want them down there just because they, it takes them too long and.
Dumpster down low where they can just throw it down?
Yep. We build it up and put a concrete structure there so they drive above the concrete and throw it in.
That's a great idea.
Really nice. Yeah.
I bet they appreciate it.
We don't like, uh, people's mothers and wives in the pit putting up with the smell and flat tires and whatever. So we've just got that finished. In fact, uh, we just hauled our first three cans off from this weekend.
Oh, great.
It's just, it's been working out good. Um, we got new employees starting tomorrow. So we're excited about that. Um, our budget's on pretty good. As you can see, talking about budget, there's, today is one of these is today from January first until today, and then January first to today a year ago. And you can see that we're up about twenty-five thousand dollars compared to what we were last year. Um, there's a couple of places that there is less material, um, on number four, class four. There was, last year was thirteen thousand tons. This year's only twelve thousand tons. And that, that would directly look at new construction and remodels. So new construction and remodels are down, but they're catching up fast. I want to say that a lot of that had to do with, wasn't a lot of construction going on in the mud. There was so much mud and cold. I think everybody that comes up here says weather, weather, weather. I'm kind of the same way. We're busy now. We're, we're, we're make record-breaking days right now, as odd as that is. I hope, I'm kind of hoping just that reality sets in and we slow down just a little bit there. Um, we did get our, our, uh, metal sold. We haven't received the money for it, but we've got it recycled. It was somewhere around six hundred tons of that stuff. So.
Wow.
There was quite a bit of, of metal that we recycled and we got our wood. The, uh, green waste chopped, chopped up and I think we've got it all sold. It's, uh, I had a phone call on my way over here that said, I'll take it all. And so hopefully that, that should just come out to be a nominal fee where we just kind of break even. But that stuff's not going into the pit. You've seen how big them piles are. So we can keep our landfill going just a little longer, keeping that stuff out. And it's a good source for the community.
Bruce, are those chips such that you can put them in playgrounds without kids getting slivers or not?
Uh, not really.
Cause you know the playgrounds, they have that wood product that it's, they use it in playgrounds. They put it deep.
You probably could, but a kid will get a sliver.
They will get slivers if they're.
Yeah. Cause it's so dry. It's not, it's not chipped when it's wet. And there's all different kinds of trees there. Some people throw a, a Russian olive, for instance, or a.
Oh, yeah.
A male Idaho locust with the big thorns. So it doesn't really work.
Very good for that.
If your kids are tough enough, they can pluck them out. It's, it doesn't really work that good. It really isn't. We're working on, well, our John Deere loader should be here in July. When that happens, then we'll be able to transfer some equipment to the fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds. Well, that'd be great.
Which I'm sure they've, they've been needing and wanting. Um, our compactor, we got one compactor that we had rebuilt last year, but they couldn't do the front end on it. We didn't have enough money. So it's down getting rebuilt right now. And then it should be in good shape. We're working on changing some of the routes. We've had so many people move into certain areas that we're having a hard time getting them routes picked up in one day. So we're working on switching a few routes around. But Jeremy and I have been, I've been working close with Jeremy. He's the, he's my main man out there and he's doing a fantastic job. We love him. We're still down one guy. Um, but we, we put it out, um, put a bid out for it last Thursday. So. Any questions about landfill? Commissioner Blake, I don't know if you've been out there, but they are missing a few Mountain Dews. I know that.
He's been gone. He's been gone.
Curtis has been going kind of slow. And I said, hey, how about some Mountain Dews? I haven't seen Commissioner Blake for a while.
It's been a couple of weeks. I mean, I was out there about two weeks ago. It was Curtis' day off. So I, I mean, I brought Mountain Dew, but I had no Curtis.
You better get on it.
It doesn't matter who's there. I'd bring Mountain Dew whether, you know, and leave it with whoever's there.
I was just teasing you, but we do appreciate you bringing us.
No, I, uh.
He's good help.
I try and get the, keep those guys fueled.
Some caffeine to keep them going.
I told them that they got to share with the guys in the pit. I don't know if it ever makes it down there or not.
I'm not sure if they do or not.
Probably not.
Um, going on to road department. Man, we've been way, way busy in road department. Um, right now we're working on some MOUs for gravel at Cedar Mountain, also at Newcastle and at Gold Springs. The, uh, ones in Cedar Mountain are on private property. Um, the one in Newcastle is a land trade, as you guys know, and some on another piece of private property. And then the Gold Springs one is one that is in a state land section that actually Paul and I found. And so we're really close on those. Um, right now our crew's on Cedar Mountain. We've had just, you know, weather, weather, weather. We've had bad roads that wiped out and we're still up there working on them roads. We've got them passable for cars and trucks, but not semi trucks. A lot of people are wanting to get their livestock up and down with, with semi trucks. So we're working on the Smith Hill today. We did get the Black Mountain Road done. So Clarks and Webster's can get down to their property. Um, there's the one issue right there where Linford builds his pond and Rich and I have been working with him and he's got till September, I believe September first to come up with a solution and have it fixed. Um, that, that's on him, not on us. Just.
Back to county specs.
Yeah, back to county specs.
Is it, is it passable? So I, I was up there.
Now.
You'd get a truck and a horse trailer through it easy enough.
Okay. The last time I was up there, it was under construction.
Oh, yeah.
But it was.
It was a big bump, wasn't there? They said that.
Well, it was a, there, there was a drop-off. They had a, the, they had a backhoe up there just dumping gravel in it. But you had to kind of four-wheel drive through the gravel.
Cause it was just gravel. It was like driving through sand.
It was just, yeah, it was like driving through sand.
It's not bad now. It really isn't.
I know I, I probably got, well, between the Webster's, the Clark's, the, I mean, my phone, the Nelson's, I mean, my, my phone went nuts with.
I think we all got them.
That has calmed down. So I.
Yeah.
I just, I'm hoping that they were able to get their livestock in and.
They were.
Excellent.
So we're still working a little bit. Um, well, not on that road anymore. We've got that road looking pretty good. It washed out past the girls camp.
Yeah.
Low there that was really bad and that's all done. So they're actually working on Smith Hill right now. And then on the day spring going toward Canaraville. Um, and so I'll probably be, I'm going to go up there and work with them. Justin's going to be on a dozer on another part of Cedar Mountain. So I probably won't be too available this week. I'll be on the mountain all week. It's my plan. Um, couple of things that we're working on is the realignment for the Jack Rabbit Road. It's out on Kane Springs. And again, they did some bush, brush hog clearing and it created some more springs. Well, them springs are right in the middle of the road. So we have to divert the road. Um, BLM's working with Rich on, on the, uh, permits for that. Also the realignment for Gold Springs. We're working on that with the BLM as well.
I don't know if anybody knows or have been down that road, but it's horrible. It goes right down a wash. And so we're going to try to get it up on the bench to where it's not washing out every single time. We have a little bit of water.
And it would be better to have that riparian area untouched. It creates more feed and it's.
Yeah.
Um.
Much better.
Environmentally, it's a lot better. I did have the road on the bench.
It's more gravelly.
Yeah. Yeah. And safer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're also working on building the parking lot for the snowmobilers up on fourteen. Justin went up there today to push gravel. I'm a little concerned about whether or not that gravel will meet state spec. I took in some samples to Joel and he's working on that right now to see if there's a wear test. Um, if they'll pass that wear test. Um, the Forest Service thinks it will based on the information they did 10 years ago. But that was, things have changed a lot in 10 years. Um, our obligation's going to be to push the gravel. Kane County's going to crush it. We're going to haul it. And then the Forest Service will grade it and place it. Well, we'll place it. They'll grade it.
What happens if it doesn't test? Are we going to have to?
I think they're going to have to go back to the.
Drawing board. Cause it'll be a lot more expensive.
Oh, you're going to have to haul it either from Cedar or Hatch.
Yeah.
They're, find a different pit. But we're hoping, we're keeping our fingers crossed. Both, we should know soon. I took them, them samples into Joel, um, at Jam Engineering last Tuesday. So we'll find out. Um, we're still working on forty-one hundred and seventy-seven hundred west. Um, that'll be where we go to, we got to haul some gravel there. I don't think, well, I'm, I know for a fact, we're not going to get seventy-seven hundred chipped this year. That was our goal, but it's not, it just didn't happen. Too much other, too many other things.
But at our pit.
Yeah. Our pit was, that's a great pit for recharge. It takes a lot of water, doesn't it, Paul? And so we just felt like it was a lot better idea to have recharge in there. And maybe it cleans some of our material.
It might.
We've, that's still on the list.
It's the pure water, just the top of the thing. It's.
Yeah. That's a great pit for recharge. We had, you know, with, with, uh, Rich, we worked on keeping them things open. You know, we didn't have any water. We had water go into the veterinary clinic over here in Summit one time. But it just came up over their, their, uh, covert was a little small. But the rest, all that wa, none of that water from Summit made it to the little salt lake. It all went into recharge. Every bit of it went into recharge for the whole year, the winter as well. Those pits over here, um, Travis has been able to maintain them and we've done well with recharge this year, all over the county. Um, we got to start skin patching in the next couple of weeks. We're way behind there. Um, but as soon as we get off the mountain, that's where we're going to do, start our skin patching. Um, we're going to have chip the Hart Road out in Newcastle and forty-one hundred for sure in Cedar. Um, most likely we're going to have to skin patch a lot of Lund Highway and, and probably chip that as well. Um, but, but that'll happen probably in, in August. First of September is really going to be our, the closest we can get. Um, I'm not sure where we're at with the Enix CJC trade. We was going to trade some roads and then we were going to trade some rocks. I'm not sure what they've ever come up with.
Oh, I thought we had an MOU in place. No?
Well, if, if we do, I don't know.
Our mind.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I know about it, I guess, is my.
Um, let me follow up on that. I thought we were done.
Because if we're going to build them roads, we, that's going to be really a struggle this year to get them things. And seventy-seven hundred done too.
Yeah.
Um.
I've got a meeting out there this afternoon. I'll, I'll follow up on that.
Where's Carston? He should be happy. This next one concerns him. We lost another employee. John's going to go over to work for Carston. Um, so we're down three.
What?
Yeah. He wants to be a, an assessor. So he got the job as an assessor. So we've lost a, an extremely good, Car, Carston will be happy with him. Um, our budget's on track so far and all our employees are healthy and working both places. Anybody got questions?
So John, our, John Williams?
This is crazy, huh?
What on earth? Wow.
He said he didn't want to be sixty years old and be in a blade.
He's the best blade operator there is.
Yeah, I agree.
Wow.
I agree. But we're excited for him to go get in new adventures and.
Well, I'm glad at least he's staying with the county.
Yeah, he's good help. He's good help. We love him.
Yeah.
And we're excited for him to go be.
We'll just have to have some others step up.
Yeah, amen. Yeah. So we'll find him.
Cool.
Hey, I appreciate it. I'm just going to bold if you guys don't have any questions.
Yep.
Well, thanks, Bruce.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thanks for all your work up the canyon. That was just, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah. And that, thanks. We've, we've had a pretty good team effort this year. We had a lot of stuff go wild and we thank you for your help. We appreciate all the work you did. I think we saved that road.
Yeah, I think it's going to look good. Thanks, Bruce.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, um, let's go to commission reports. Marilyn, you want to go first?
Yeah. So I don't know, Bruce didn't talk about this, but, um, I went over with him, uh, on the fourteenth. Um, quarterly, uh, all of the supervisors are invited, um, mostly Southern Utah, but, uh, they get together, talk about suppliers, you know, different things that you, that you do in the road department. Um, I cooked them lunch. They all came over to the Cedar City Road Department and, and, uh, we had Kendall Allen, our GIS guy that everybody wants to steal because everybody loves him so much. He, uh, talked about, uh, as our guys drive around, they have apps, which I don't know whether anybody knows this, but this is, it, it's so amazing that they can drive around. If they see a pothole, driving sixty miles an hour, they can pin that. And then when they come back, they can do those, those, uh, with the GIS app that they use. Any of the guys can, can, uh, flag a pothole, uh, you know, breaking up on the edge of the road or whatever. And they can, they can, uh, put that in there. So when we go to patch, they have all of those in their phone. So they say, oh, we've got five things we've got to do on this road and then go to another. So they went over that. Um, the smaller counties, it's hard for them to, because they don't have a GIS guy, you know, like in Garfield County. Um, David Dodds is like their public works and everything else. So he does everything. So that's kind of interesting. But, um, it's a really good meeting. Um, we've, uh, Paul and I went to, uh, to a road, um, convention that the, uh, UAC put together. And, and they met there also. And, and to just get those guys together and say, you know, what do you have and, you know, what are your issues? What are, you know, uh, just really, really helpful to all of us to be able to put that information together and talk about it. Um, of course we had another jail meeting last week. We're just moving along with that with the, we're getting down to the nitty gritty on the plans and on the, um, you know, concise, uh, things where everything, uh, are. But anyway, um, okay. And then, uh, Susan, uh, Blackner, our fair director and I met with Mike Thomas and he is over, uh, he is out of the state, uh, Utah Office of Outdoor Rec. Uh, that's where a, a lot of those grants come from that like Mike Worthing gets for, uh, a lot of that, uh, grant money has gone to the Five Mile that we're working on, trying to get it back open. Um, so the legislature put together monies to be able to, um, have regional trail crews throughout the state. They have one up north. They have one, um, in Sevier and they want to come to Iron County and put, uh, for the southern region. And, uh, I think we'll stage those. A lot of time they stage them out of the, um, road department in a county. But our road department is so bursting at the seams. We have so many departments in that area. We decided maybe Parowan would be a better spot for that because we have the fairgrounds and, um, eventually we're hoping to be able to get a, a barn that we'd be able to put offices in. But, but he could stage all of his equipment out of there. And I think we can fi, find him an office here at the courthouse. And, uh, that'll be very helpful because those are funded by the state. They'll come into our region and help us with our trail uh, maintenance and building new trails and that type of thing. Um, Cedar City had a great, uh, fun week last week with the hundred year of the rail, railroad centennial. Um, I participated in a few of those. It was really fun. I went out to the paint night at Iron Springs, uh, with my granddaughter. It was very fun. Um, the mayor, uh, last Friday had a gala and that was really neat. We went into the TWA building, which all of us remember as kids. The TWA building was where they ran the park service out of and, um, Rainbow Sign and Banner have gone in there and redone those buildings and they are absolutely beautiful. And I had never been back in them since they had done that. So that was really a treat for me to be able to see the beautiful work that they had done in those buildings. Really, really nice. Um, I also, this last week, got to, um, uh, go and participate in the, uh, Great American Stampede, which is the Lions Club and the, uh, uh, Queen Contest. I go to a lot of those and I've judged a lot of them. Uh, great event and, and that was really fun to, to, uh, get to go to that. Rich Wiltson was there. His wife is in the Lions. So they were there. I always tease him about, I saw his truck out in the parking lot and I said, I knew it was your truck because it was so dirty. Rich, Rich always goes out in the county everywhere and his truck's always dirty because he's always working everywhere. So anyway, that's my report.
I've just got a couple of things. Um, two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, uh, glad Wendy's here. She can, she can correct my errors. Uh, Wendy Jessen is our director of the Children's Justice Center and I, uh, and Jackson Ames, uh, is the police chief in Enix City and the president of the Children's Justice Center Advisory Board. Uh, had an opportunity to travel to North Carolina. We met with three different, out there, there are children's advocacy centers, CACs. To, it was kind of a multi-purpose trip to look at both, uh, design and architecture of some, uh, of some of their facilities out there, uh, that are really touted as being the best in the nation as far as functionality and, and design. Every few years, the, the Children's Justice Center is accredited by the children's, I screw this up every time. National Children's.
Alliance.
I, I don't know how I screw that up, but I do every time. Yeah, the NCA, National Children's Alliance. During that accreditation, they said, if you guys are building a new facility, there, you, there's a couple, uh, specifically the Dragonfly House in North Carolina that is really the best facility that we've ever, ever worked with. Uh, we found some cheap airfare. We road tripped out there. We, we visited the Dragonfly House. We visited a place called Pat's Place and another place that we can never remember the name because it's got a really super long name. It was a county facility. Anyway, uh, we got some really good input on plans. Uh, there's certain things that we're tweaking about our plans. I think we were pretty much on point with what we were designing for functionality. Uh, it was also really cool to talk with them about how their centers run and some of their programming in their centers and possibilities, uh, for us to maybe expand, do, do some things better. Uh, just to provide better service and more service to our victim community. So that was a really quick down and dirty trip and it, but it was, it was super beneficial. Uh, attended a disaster tabletop, uh, with, it was, it was a sta- it was a, a tabletop drill, earthquake drill, uh, that our emergency manager, uh, George Coulson organized and facilitated. Uh, was state emergency management, Washington County, King County, uh, Beaver County, basically the five county area plus, uh, lots of, the state geologist was there. Uh, basically to look at some of the things that we need to worry about in the event of a major earthquake. The state geology department says within the next ten years, we have a fifty-fifty chance of a major quake with injury and property damage. I guess to, if you wanna put that in perspective, if you look at an organization that's taking that serious with that very survey, uh, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints is revamping the Salt Lake Temple with earthquake preparedness. I mean, spending years and millions of dollars to earthquake mitigate, uh, the Salt Lake Temple. So I guess if you put that in perspective, if we ought to take this serious, uh, it's not a bad idea.
Hope you should.
It's not a bad idea. There's nothing that we can do really. Uh, I mean, we, uh, we talked about our communications, our transportation, uh, our need. You know, if we have fatalities and medical centers, these are always just really good conversations. And I think, you know, although there's things that we need to do, Iron County is really in pretty good shape. Uh, we're on top of those things as well as we can be. With early warning systems, we, with a major earthquake, we may get as much as ten seconds early warning, so. We should be fine. And the fact that all of the, uh, all of the fault lines that come off the Hurricane Fault actually sit directly under our water tanks and, uh, water lines in the Cedar Valley, you know, nothing to worry about. So.
I'm getting under the desk.
Yeah, just climb under the desk and hold on.
That's what we used to do.
Right? Um, no, that, that was really good. It was a great conversation to, to bounce things off of the, you know, that many experienced people in a room. It was, it's good to, to take, take part in those things and keep that conversation and build those. Really building the relationships with our regional team is the most important thing because we're gonna rely on each other when something like that happens in our communities. Um, one other thing I wanted to touch on really quickly, uh, last Sunday, uh, we had a structured fire in Burl that resulted in the death of the occupant of that house. I wanna give, I, I responded on that incident. I wanna give props, uh, to Vernon and our Burl Fire Department. Their response was quick. They had four, they only had four firefighters show up, uh, were all they were able to, to man for that incident. And they worked their guts out for days to, to not only, you know, put the fire out, but make sure that it didn't turn into a wildland fire and everything else. You know, when you're out in the middle of the sagebrush, uh, we had, we had high winds, all sorts of things come up. Uh, Enterprise Fire was called in as backup. Uh, they were en route within twelve minutes of their call. Uh, and they were there. Uh, did have a couple of phone calls and an email stating that Burl Fire never showed up. The Washington City Fire was called as backup but refused to do anything. That, which is all just BS. I mean, none of that is true. Everybody responded, everybody worked heroically. There was nothing that could have been done to prevent this loss of life on the fire department end. That, that, it, it is what it is. When I was getting ready to leave, it was an older structure with old tin roofing, really heavy tin roofing. The back of it collapsed over, the front of the structure was completely burned away. Well, they couldn't get up, they couldn't move that tin roofing to fight the fire. So it was like an oven that just kept going. As I was, I was talking to Vernon about what we could maybe do to help and he goes, Vernon said, well, Ryan got a new track home and I need it. He's kinda joking and I'm like, I'll get you Ryan's track home. So we, we had the track home was there within an hour, hour and a half of that request, was able to actually spread that debris out and make it possible to fight that fire. So just, and wanna, you know, the sheriff's office was there very quickly, did everything they could. State Fire Marshal's Office responded, uh, Enterprise Fire Department, Burl Fire Department. Uh, our state fire warden's office, Lucas and, and Ryan responded with heavy equipment and spent a good deal of time there. It was a really well coordinated effort and for the resources that we have out there, they did a phenomenal job.
Condolence to, to their fam- the family of the loss. We, we would like to say that and, uh, from the commission and we're very, very sorry for their loss. It was a forty-two-year-old man and very dif- difficult situation.
But our first responders worked, worked heroically. It was, it was, uh, I just am really proud of those guys out there. The, what they're able to accomplish with few numbers. We just need more volunteers.
Yeah.
We need.
Volunteers are a huge problem out on the desert. They're just, we really need some kind of a recruiting to be able to get those volunteers. And, and it's a problem everywhere. Everybody talks about it all the time, every meeting you go to.
I think there's some, I, I think there's some things that we can do that are gonna be a big change in how we do things, but that's something we'll have to evaluate and it's not gonna happen overnight.
We've been working hard on the west desert to, um, get, get them some resources.
Yeah, so we'll, there's lots of stuff we can do. It'll, it's gonna take, it's gonna take time and money, but it's something that I think we're dedicated to do, so we'll figure it out.
Thank you. We're way over time. I'll be very brief. I, I'll cut mine way short. Five county meetings, we had public health, uh, finance and steering committee meetings with five county. The steering committee is made up of the mayor, from each county, school board member and commissioner. And, uh, public health, Dr. Blodgett's awesome. Love working with him. He does a great job. I attended the mayor's gala too. It was very enjoyable here in the history of the railroad and some of those activities with my grandsons. It was a lot of fun. Fleet's added two new employees. We'll talk about that later in the agenda. Been working on some flooding issues in Parowan Valley, just in preparation for maybe another year like we had. We, we really are blessed with the way the snow came off slow. And, um, we've got a few things we've gotta tweak over here in the Parowan Valley. Uh, while I was over here, um, I got a call from Dan Jess and they had some, that, we lost that bridge, uh, just a small farm bridge over by KB Oil, just in Parowan, just, uh, just to the south. And I think it's the Morris's that use that a lot. And so Curtis is taking that bridge off. We're using some waste blocks to build head, head walls on each side to set that back on. But they had, Curtis, when he left, there was some riprap in the metal of the channel and it diverted the stream and it was washing out a water line. So while I was over there, I jumped on the machine and moved that around and got that taken care of. And that was, uh, that was good, worked out good timing. But, uh, anyway, I'll cut that short, but thank you for the reports. It's, we lost our clock.
Yes.
But it's corner after ten, so we're after ten, we'll take a ten-minute break and reconvene right about ten twenty-five.
Did it reset?
Sam?
Just a battery in.
Set it up on the window. It's gotta get that signal. It's too many, too much concrete in here.
This is what gives the ones out, which of course they're very precious, they're like cash off of doing it. My two concerns, of course, from a treasure community view is.
All right, it's about ten thirty. We'll resume our county commission meeting. We appreciate those who have joined us for this meeting. We'll go to item number one. This is a public hearing, discussion on possible approval of the partial road vacation of Enic Road. A public road located near 5900 North Enic, Utah, approximately .41 acres, sixty-six feet wide by 238.9 feet in length. Includes a fifty-foot radius cul-de-sac, all within the section described in the agenda. And the applicant is North Springs Ranch, Carver Spencer Jones, presented by Reed Erickson.
Good morning, commissioners. You'll recall this is a discussion that we started at the May twenty-second meeting, had a public hearing. And then because of notification requirements under the changes that the legislature made and wanting to make sure that we complied with both of the Class A and the old stuff under both sections, we deemed it best to continue that public hearing until today. We did then, as a result, advertise at the state notice website, reposted the property, resent letters to adjacent property owners, and did that for the four consecutive weeks. And I have some slides that can show the details of the state law requirement for notification, but I'll just simplify and say, I believe we've complied with everything that we're aware of in order to take the high road on all notification processes in order to do this. So that's what's happened in the last month since we last visited. In addition to the comments that were given at the last public hearing, I've received three written notices also that I forwarded to you this morning. Have a hard copy of them as well, and we'll make mention of them. For those not involved in the previous discussion, this is just a vicinity map showing generally where the property is located on the north side of Cedar Valley, north of Enic. As we zoom in here, where the star is located is the area. Where the lime green line shows the proposed location of the belt route alignment and the Enic Road that is fairly much perpendicular to that, that goes through the area. The gray area just south of the boundary, or the star is the boundary for Enic City, and then everything north of that is in the unincorporated area. The more yellow properties are BLM properties, and the blue is SITLA. So you can see that part of the concerns that have been raised is that this road provided public access to BLM up in Section 29 in thirty, as well as the SITLA property, Section thirty-two there. There is additional access to some of those properties off of, through Section Four, off of the old Highway ninety-one. If this pointer works very well. This location right here, where the Cedar City well is located, right here, there's a road that runs up through there and goes up and provides BLM access to all of this property up here, as well as SITLA. This is access that has been used over the years for various times. And I'll let the applicant and those who want to talk in the public hearing discuss how that's been controlled or not, and what, you know, whether it be considered public access. And that's what we're here to discuss and decide today, is whether or not that warrants and rises to the threshold of being a public access that needs to be maintained for public purposes, and whether it was ever established as a public access, or whether it's an access that the public simply had access to from time to time, which doesn't necessarily make it a public access. And we can talk specifics as we get into the discussion. But for an overview, I just wanted to zoom in here and show exactly what's being requested. The property, the blue line on this map is the belt route, proposed belt route alignment. And the property that's located, the border of the property right here is where the gate is currently, where it's been locked, and the turnaround right here. The applicant has just recently, or within the last year or so, acquired this piece of property right here. Before this was their property boundary, and that's why the gate is at that location. And then this has been, was a different property owner, and then Mr. Jones acquired this property. And with the alignment of the belt route being proposed through here, the consideration for this proposal, or this vacation, is because of the belt route. So his interest was to vacate across his entire property. But the county's interest, of course, is to be able to continue that public access to the gate, because we believe that that's always been there, that access up to the gate. But recognize that there's no reason for the county to have an access beyond the gate if that's not a public road. And so to vacate from the gate down to where the belt route would be, would facilitate the applicant's request by then not providing public access further north, and would still accomplish what the county is looking for by maintaining an access to the belt route, so that people going up out of Enic on Enic Road could hit the belt route and go either north or east or west on the belt route, and would have access to the belt route at that location. So that's the proposal, is to have, to move that temporary cul-de-sac at the gate back down to where approximately the location of the belt route will be. And that's why there would be a temporary turnaround there, and then the applicant request is to vacate north of that up to where the gate is, where they consider that to not be public access anymore beyond that point. So that's a brief overview here. The additional three written comments that are received since the last public hearing, that all expressed concern, basically in summary that they want to see that maintained because it's access to public property, and that we should maintain access to public property, and that that road has served as accessible public property in the past. So that's essentially the summary of what their comments are. So I think, unless you have specific questions, I think we can just continue the public hearing and take additional comments, in addition to what you received last time, and then we can have further discussion.
Okay.
All right?
All right, we'll go ahead and...
Maybe I can just put this map up for, this general map might be the best one to have for discussion.
Okay.
I can move accordingly.
All right, thank you. Go ahead and open the public hearing. So if you, as Reed said, if you want to make a comment, if you'll please approach the mic and state your name.
My name is Worth Grimshaw, and I'm here to oppose the closure of any part of that road. I've been acquainted with that road since nineteen fifty or before, when I was a small boy. My brother and some of my friends and I used to go out that road and camp on the state lands and the BLM lands out there and ride our horses. When I got a little older, my brother and I used to break horses, and we would use that road on a daily basis to ride the horses we were breaking out there and back, and around on the state and BLM lands. I used to take my sheep wagon out there and leave for my family in the summertime so that they could go camp there. And I was not alone. There were lots of people who used that road to gain access to those state lands and BLM lands out there for, through the years. At the, at that time, there was no gate. There was no fence to put the gate on, except on the west side of the road. And we had total access to that anytime we wanted. That stopped later in time, and there are, I realize we're a little late protesting this. On the other hand, sometimes life takes you to a point you don't have time to protest and do things you'd like to do because of other necessities. Anyway, I'm totally opposed to the closure of that property. And I would like to also state that the access from Enic to that gate is on a prescriptive right-of-way through property owned by my family at this point. We being the neighbors to Mr. Jones at present on the south. And so I understand every property owner would like to have complete privacy at their property. I would as well. However, that isn't what the law states. And it, I believe, states that once that property has been used for ten years as a roadway, it's a prescriptive right-of-way and legally cannot be closed. And in checking back, we found county maps which show the Enic Road going through Mr. Jones' property and continuing north clear to Parowan Gap. And there are county maps available from nineteen fifty, as late as two thousand and eleven at least, that show that. And we therefore believe that road should be open to the public again and be accessible by them. And basically, that's what I have to say. Any, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Mr. Grimshaw, when was the last time you remember, like an approximate year or timeframe that that road was open with access to public lands?
I can't tell you that. It's probably been fifteen years.
Okay.
Maybe a few more, maybe a few less.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a memory from the nineteen, early nineteen forties of two roads were used often by the people of Enic. One went to Three Peaks. The other one went north on Enic Road and just kept going. And they're all, those roads were exactly the same. They were maneuvered not by cars, but by teams of horses and wagons. I sit here today, and I'm just amazed at what the county's been able to do with Three Peaks. I just compliment previous county commissioners. We have just a prime recreation area, there's no question. I, I'm a little concerned, though, because that was developed, this other area, which was used for the same purposes, is being cut off by this proposal. I, I think it's interesting that it's called a cul-de-sac, a place to turn around. I think the old term used to be dead end. And I just really am concerned that we cut that off at that point. That's a great recreation out there. And it's probably, in my opinion, the last days of the deer hunt is the greatest place in the world to hunt deer. Anyway, I'm, I'm opposed to that. I'd like to see it developed even more at state land and its BLM property. And if something could be done in the way of Three Peaks, that's just prime area. You drive through Enic and just keep going, and you could have the best recreation area in the world. Anyway, I, I recognize that people own property and they want, don't want people in it. And there's a right there. But that's such a prime place for a recreation area for our growing community. Anyway, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So that's been closed off for, I don't know, twenty years, I don't know, fifteen, worth that. So you've still gone out there, people have still gone out there, but they've gone on that other road that Reed showed us to get out there. So the Enic folks have still gone out there. You've gone, they have not? There's not a road there?
There's a road, no.
That's my question.
There's a way to get there, the best way to get there is on a horse.
That's not a bad thing.
But...
But there is another road getting into that area. You can come back up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Tyler Melling, representing North Spring Ranch. I'm going to have a hard time keeping this under three minutes, but as the proponent, I'll take the time we need unless the commission sees the need otherwise. Mr. Whittaker, if you could pull up, we'll just start with that first slide and go from Perfect. Okay. So today we're discussing Enic Road and the vacation of that. It's summer and, you know, they were mentioning weather and everything, so vacations along that theme, right? This this slide right here is pointing to the proposed map for what is to be vacated, what is to be dedicated. So again, Mr. Erickson did a good job of orienting us around the property. Just to reiterate again, these light and shaded areas are the existing public road. It's described that bottom left arrow is pointing on the on the map. It describes that center line. There's there's been a recorded right-of-way center line. I think that was recorded in 2016 on behalf of Enic City or for Enic City. And the top arrow is pointing to the existing gate. We're going to talk about the gate quite a bit. So whenever we're talking about the gate, unless we specify it a different gate, it's that gate, right? Third is the second from the top arrow, kind of in the middle of the screen, right? That's the portion, the shaded areas, what we're asking to be vacated. These aren't uncommon requests. We'll go into that a little bit as well. And then that bottom right arrow, we wanted to be careful of that because there is a existing 66-foot right-of-way recorded where that bottom right arrow is as well. And so we wanted to make sure that that wasn't impaired. And that is a private right-of-way signed by the prior owner of the property to the So the next slide, yep, discussion topic. So what we're going to talk about today. Again, I apologize for the length on this, but in many ways, I'm glad that this hearing was continued for a month because there were issues raised in the public hearing that we had assumed were settled issues as far as which parts of the road were public or private and access. So we're going to clarify those for you today. So we are going to talk about which roads are public, road closure penalties, map information, how private roads will often show up on public maps, Utah's laws about public rights of way, RS 2477 roads, and we'll go into that a little bit, the history of North Enic Road, vacations of roads in Iron County in the past, and what is involved in our request. If we could go to this slide, yep. So which roads? John, you're on it, man. This is great.
Yeah, I'd say beep.
Yeah. So which roads are public and what is the penalty? So private property owners can close access to the private roads they use to traverse and access their property, but they need to rely on evidence other than maps to differentiate public versus private roads to avoid making an illegal road closure because that if you, whether temporarily or permanently obstruct a road, that is a Class C misdemeanor in the state. So we don't want to run afoul of that, right? And especially in this case where the property owner just acquired the property to the south, the subject property in this case, it's impossible to move that gate, to move that fence without prior approval, or more commonly, a road vacation of that end portion of the existing public right-of-way, which we'll get into later. But just to illustrate, if mere presence on a map constitutes a road's public status, then there's a number of roads in this county and others that would result in prosecution. So the Melling Farm Area is one of those, right? So no one's ever disputed that Melling Drive off of 2300 west, north of the airport in Cedar City, is a private road. It's always been. If that was ever gated, if we go with maps as the source, the USGS topographical map and the Iron County Master Road Map show that. Now generally, that's for to make sure that those maps are complete for emergency services, for fire response, for utilities and everything else. But if that was a public road, then putting a gate on it would be a criminal offense, as would the neighbors to the south that have always had their road gated. And that top right arrow, I don't know exactly what that's pointing to because that's an alfalfa field now, but it shows up on our county master roadmap, so maybe that's an eventual road planned in the future. Private the private owners of that property aren't aware of what that is or why it's there, but it is.
I believe that's an east-west corridor that's planned by Cedar City, if I recall.
Yes, yeah. And they and they recently realigned that a little bit, but yes, and that that might be why it's showing up there. But again, it's not intended to designate current public roads. If we go to the next one, there's some private driveway on Lund Highway, same thing. The owners here on this parcel are Stephen Cindy Gilbert. And so again, if they were to ever obstruct that private drive, if we're treating all roads on a map as public, then they would need to be cited with a criminal penalty as well. If we could go to the next one, the Johnson Fort Road also shows up. So if someone wanted to sell tour bus tickets to go on that road and go around the gate that's there and and take pictures of Old Johnson's Fort, they're more than welcome to. And anyone obstructing according to that argument is, again, making a criminal act by obstructing that road because if it shows on the map, it must be public, right? And that's not what we're arguing, right? The next, no one's exempt. Everyone in the room is an offender. Commissioner Wood, is this this bit of land here, is this a public or private road that's shown on the map?
Totally private.
You sure?
Yep.
Okay.
They're showing on your maps, though, aren't they?
They're showing up on the maps. Yep. The next one, another commissioner. Now, this one's out of the county, so it's harder to find. But luckily, Commissioner Cousins sets his Facebook to public with these kinds of photos. So Commissioner Cousins, have you ever closed this road knowingly?
Absolutely.
Interesting, because it's on the map. So there's a, where's Candace Reed, do you cover criminal defense and Moab as well?
I don't.
Oh, okay. Just checking. Okay. So what does a private road look like? So this is the USGS map of Leeds downtown, center in Main. It looks like a road, right? And the city of Leeds thought so too, because we tend to respect property rights in this state unless it's for recreation or for any other government use, and then private property rights go out the window. So that's what Leeds said. They said, hey, we want this property, but we don't want to pay for it. The public's used it. So the Utah Supreme Court decided that Leeds, if they did want it, was going to have to pursue eminent domain because that is a private road, even though it shows up on the map. So we're going to get go into detail on why Leeds decide or why the Supreme Court of the state of Utah decided that this was a private road, because this is how we actually decide it. We don't use just current maps alone. We we look at a lot of other evidence. So on the next page, we have, this case was Leeds versus Prisby. Now, Mr. Prisby bought the property from a prior owner, and that prior owner had had the the property in their family since the 1800s. And so this gives a little bit of background, and bear with me, I'll read off the slide a little bit for those who are whose eyesight maybe is not as good, including myself, right? The road known as West Center Street in the town of Leeds originates at an intersection with Main Street, extends north to the crest of a small incline, and then proceeds downhill across real property owned by Terry Prisby through a narrow box underpass beneath Interstate 15 to an area known as Angel Springs. In 2000, Mr. Prisby purchased the property from Joanne George, whose family had owned the property since 1878. Sometime thereafter, Mr. Prisby, in an attempt to restrict travel on the road, erected a chain-link fence across the road at the entrance to the box tunnel and affixed no trespassing signs to the fence. In response, the town of Leeds filed this action seeking a declaratory judgment deeming West Center Street dedicated to the public pursuant to Utah Code and temporary restraining order and injunction enjoining Mr. Prisby from restricting travel on the road. Trial court heard testimony from a number of witnesses who claimed that they used West Center Street whenever they wished without restriction and without obtaining permission. The trial court also heard from Mrs. George, who testified that in October 1964, again in '71, '78, '85, '92, and '99, she, alone with or with the assistance of her son, set up a 24-hour roadblock on West Center Street for the purpose of retaining private ownership of the road. These roadblocks consisted of her or her son's physical presence, sawhorses placed across the road, and no trespassing signs placed on the sawhorses. Mrs. George testified that she never encountered anyone attempting to travel on West Center Street during her roadblocks and knows of no one who was actually prevented from using the road because of her blockades. In Wasatch County versus Oakley Berry, a companion case that we, being the Utah Supreme Court in this decision, decide we set forth a bright-line rule for determining what qualifies as an interruption in continuous use sufficient to restart the running of the dedication statute's 10-year period. An overt act that is intended by a property owner to interrupt the use of the road is a public thoroughfare and is reasonably calculated to do so. Credible evidence of such an interruption precludes any finding of continuous use, meaning, again, and this has nothing to do with road vacation, right? We're not litigating the issue today of whether this road has always been public or private in which parts, right? But if that were the issue, this is, this sets forth a standard that despite the public's use, if there is a regular interruption within those 10-year periods that's reasonably calculated to interrupt the public's use of the property, then then that precludes any finding of continuous use by the public. The court also found that Mrs. George in '64, '71, '78, '85, '92, and '99 established 24-hour physical roadblocks of West Center Street. This, she testified, she did with the intent of retaining private ownership of the road. And we conclude that Ms. George's testimony is credible evidence over overt acts intended and reasonably calculated to interrupt the use of West Center Street as a public thoroughfare. Although she did not block the public's actual use of the road because her roadblocks occurred during intermissions in the road's use, Mrs. George's intent and conduct were nevertheless sufficient to interrupt West Center Street's continuous use as a public thoroughfare for purposes of the dedication statute because each of Mrs. George's roadblocks was an interruption sufficient to restart the running of the dedication statute. West Center Street has not been continuously used as a public thoroughfare for a period of 10 years. So the Supreme Court of the state of Utah said despite this being Leeds's Center Street, just 400 feet from Main Street, it is still a private road because the property owner took the steps to protect their property. So then the other question rises, what about roads that access public lands? In the Prisby versus Leeds case, that was the case. In Utah, most the federal government does own most of our land, and that creates a challenge economically for many of our families in this in this area, especially those who make a living on the public lands. So our state and local officials have fought to keep those roads open. RS 2477 litigation illustrates the conflicting values that are weighed as we look at that, and this will tie in as we look at maps. So the RS 2477 roads, there was a case in 2008 with the Southern Utah Wilderness Alliance versus the AGRC. That's the shorthand for the Automated Geographic Reference Center, dealing with map cataloging and information. And we're going to show some of that in a little bit, too. In that case, the court, I think, provided one of the more balanced explanations of RS 2477, what its scope is, and we'll explain how it applies here. So RS 2477 granted rights of way for the construction of highways over public lands not reserved for public uses. Then in 1976, the federal government shifted its land use policy to favor federal retention of public lands rather than development and private ownership of such lands. That year, Congress repealed RS 2477 with the Federal Lands Policy Management Act, but preserved rights of way established before October 21st, 1976. Today, the identification of RS 2477 routes established prior to October 76 is an ongoing controversy. The state of Utah and many of its local municipalities have been at the heart of this controversy because so much of the public land in Utah is owned by the federal government. Accordingly, the state has alleged numerous rights of way, many of which are still in litigation even now, that run through undeveloped federal lands that might otherwise qualify for wilderness designation across now privately held lands or within federal parks or forests created after the rights of way were established. To protect these rights of way, the Utah Legislature enacted several pieces of legislation. First, in '78, they required each county to prepare and file maps with the Utah Department of Transportation identifying roads within its boundaries which were in existence as of October 21st, '76. Particularly, the act required the AGRC to create and maintain a record of the rights of way on the geographic information database. What we have here is the official PLEPCO, which stands for Utah Public Lands Policy Coordinating Office, their map of the public lands adjoining the Jones property. You'll notice the small map on the top left is a little bit zoomed out, right? It includes the state and federal land adjoining the Jones property where the current USGS map shows Enic Road connecting through. Again, we've talked about how these maps aren't always entirely accurate. So this is the PLEPCO map. PLEPCO is fighting for as many roads as possible through as much federal land as possible. And PLEPCO is claim is not claiming in any way that that road connects to the Jones Farm property. So Enic Road on the on the on the USGS map shows Enic Road coming into this, what is kind of this brown area that's noted on the cursor. But PLEPCO is not claiming that in any way. They are claiming Bravets Creek Road is public and that all of these are accessible from the frontage road between Enic and Summit. If you go to PLEPCO's site, theaccessmap.utah.gov, they actually have video camera footage of the them traversing most of these rights of way. They're quite accessible even by vehicle. These were all done by vehicle. So let's talk about the history of North Enic Road. This is an 1870 map. It does show a road approximately where Enic Road is. Now, the interesting thing about 1870, that's also the year that, oh, was it Myron or no, John Pitting Jones, I believe. John Pitting Jones was had filed and was awarded water rights out of Bravets Creek along with some other users. That is the exact path of the road to the diversion structure of Bravets Creek where John Pitting Jones took his water. That was an access that he used for that. In really small print, it's hard to see on the slide, that east-to-west road that goes along Bravets Creek says Meadow Road to Parwin. So now we call it Wind Gap, right? But back then, 1870, they called it Meadow Road to Parwin. And they considered the area to the north in large part impassable. It's cropped out, but it says High Broken Hills. And that that's that ain't a bad description, right? But you you could get to Parwin Gap through Rush Lake Road, which was farther to the west or from the roads coming out of the Parwin Valley as well. But not through this one. 1914, not much changed, except the federal government decided, hey, since we own this property, let's platter it out a little bit more specifically. There are still some accesses, some of them conflict with the prior ones. And again, we don't have, as far as I'm aware, anyone with living memory of 1914. But we do have some other folks that remember some stuff. So let's talk about some 20th century history, okay? So city of Enic, very small. At that time of that 1914 map, we're still looking at fewer than 200 residents in Enic. That's changed greatly, and with population change comes culture changes and different adjustments to uses, and and we see that. Especially between 1980 and 1990, there was quite. Especially between 1980 and 1990, there was quite significant growth. You went from enough people that you could still maybe fit an LDS ward in there, as long as you had a few Gentiles in the mix to, as they called them at the time, right, to, to all-in-one Enick Ward, although it may have been split by that time. Certainly, you couldn't do that by 1990 with almost 2,000 residents, okay? Some other things changed in the Jones family that changed their treatment of the, of the road. Prior, yeah, they, they, the Jones family fairly regularly permitted access to friends, family, members of their church congregation, youth groups needing access, their tax advisors and others who had fiduciary relationships to them and others. But in 1989, there was a girl, Elizabeth Stankowski. She was riding a Jones family horse, not on Jones property, but it was a family horse. She was only 16-year-old, years old, and she passed away from her injuries. The Jones family was almost brought to financial ruin at that time and had to pay out a settlement, which at the, in today's dollars would be a more than seven-figure settlement. It was sizable. After that point, some friends, some trusted relationships still were given access, but others were not. We have records, we'll go through these a little bit in depth for the first several, and then we'll speed it up as we go because there are so many. But there, we have a number of records showing how the road was treated at the time by different folks, and we've, these have been obtained, you'll, you'll notice many of these affidavits are from folks that have either passed away or have become ill since then. There were some that were obtained before 2014, the bulk of these were obtained in about 2014, when we had a property owner to the south of the, the proposed property here block the road and, and trying to make sure that it was recognized that this was a public road up to the gate. And so, and then we have some more recent ones as well. The Allen Stones affidavit is the oldest one we have. It was signed in 2009. He worked with the Iron County Road Department, and he had personal knowledge of the public road being maintained, graded by public entities up to the Jones Gate, and knew it was private beyond that during his entire 25-year tenure with Iron County. The next one was Earl Gibson, similar hat but for Enick City. He worked with Enick City for 23 years, and he knew that the Jones Gate was always locked, his knowledge had always been locked, and had never been maintained by public officials past the gate, but again, before the gate, was maintained by public bodies. Carlisle Hewlett used to work, used North Enick Road, Road for trade work and for work with the Jones livestock, which, again, if you do much work out there, as, as many of these folks have, you'll know that, yes, that gate is at times open because it's an active farm operation, but it's almost always closed. And so, it is, again, he, Carlisle Hewlett said that, to his knowledge, between 1944 and 2014, it was public up to that point, private past that, and the gate was locked, to his knowledge. Judge Joe Jackson, again, since at least 1965, recognized that that gate was private beyond the gate, that property was private beyond the gate and locked. We have Norman Grimshaw, he was actually the property owner to the south prior, and is the one that issued that right-of-way just to the south where we're requesting. He used the North Enick Road beyond the Jones Gate for personal use milking cows and driving cattle by permission since at least 1929, with knowledge that the road was public up to the locked gate and private north of the gate. We have Allen, but I, I don't know who Allen Garfield is, but this is Bud, right? So, Bud Garfield, he used to work back, way back when for Myron Jones. I think it's because he was trying to chase his granddaughter around, Janice Jones, who ended up marrying a Webster instead, and that's my grandma, so. They, anyway, again, since 1949, used the property for hunting horses and all that, right? But also knew it was by permission only and only behind the locked gate. Justin Gray, we've got a former council member and mayor of Enick City, again, used it for horse riding, four-wheeling, knew at least since 69 that that was public, up to the gate, private beyond, and locked. Dilworth Armstrong, similar, since 1948. Burnett Baldwin, again, actually, this one's especially interesting. So, Burnett Baldwin was on a date with a Shirley Ann McIntyre in 56, came up to the gate, noticed a sign that said either no trespassing or, or, what was the other thing he said? Or private property. He can't remember which, but there was a sign back in 56, and he stopped there and turned around, and he didn't say this in his affidavit, but it seems that his driving companion Shirley Ann McIntyre decided she wanted access to the property because she married the property owner later. So, that's Shirley Ann Jones now. Mel Clark, known the Jones parties, and again, that the road is public up to the gate, accessible by permission only north of the gate for at least the last 70 years. Mike Clark, again, similar, and he can speak for himself later if he wants to, so I won't put words in his mouth, but he did say, again, 55 years at least, he, he knows that that road has been private past the gate. Brent Hunter, y'all know Brent, he's, he, he's probably known this longer, but he's known for sure for at least 22 years that he's been working the property, that that's been a locked gate, but he's been around quite a bit longer. Joseph Marshall, used the road for recreation and riding horses since at least 1982, with knowledge that it was private past the gate and locked. Franklin Jones, used it for, again, scouting camps, recreation, obtaining gravel, helping the Jones with firewood, or with woolwork and getting firewood, since at least 1960, again, noting that the, the road was private past the gate. Richard Webster, since at least 1974, knew that that gate was locked and that it was private access beyond. Ruth Jones, 1940, that she's known that it was locked and private. Tim Burrows, used it for work farming and hunting since at least 1965, knowing that it was private beyond. Abner Johnson, 1952, I know this is getting old, but this, again, we thought this was a settled issue, but we wanted to make sure this is on the record. Gordon Bat, again, knowing that the road was private past the gate and locked, and that since at least 68. Brent Jones, since at least 53, used the road and knew since at least 48 that it was locked and not accessible to the public past the gate. Scott Zingleman, knew it was private since 1948, used it with permission for Hunter's Ed hay purchases since at least 84. Neil Sumption, knew it was locked and private past the gate since 65. Ricky Hoyle, since 78, that it's been locked and private. Garth Jones, 54, since 54, he's known it was locked and private. I'm learning very quickly, there's, even though there's a lot of Joneses, they're not all related. It's kind of, there's, that's one of those common names. You don't get that growing up with Melling like, with a name like Cousins or Melling or Blake, right? So.
We have lots of Wood families that are.
There's a lot of Wood and Woods, right? That's the problem.
Yeah, because we lost our ass in the cow business.
Oh, that's how it.
That's why we're Wood.
Oh, that's funny. David Anderson, used it, knew it was private north of the gate since at least 64, used it since at least 84. And then finally, last but not least, my, my grandmother, Janice Webster, in 2014 also, this was her old extended family homestead as well. And so, she knew, on her affidavit, it says 99-plus years she's known it was, it's been a gate, and, and this was, what, 10 years ago? So, well, I won't reveal what her age would have been then, because then people can do math, right? But, but she's had firsthand knowledge for some time and, and knew beyond that before her birth that that has been a private road north of the gate. Okay, so let's get to why we're here. Road vacations, that is not the same thing as deeming a road public or private, right? So, if you as government want to take someone's property and have it dedicated to the public use and everything, right? The, the state does have this kind of public use, public highway vesting thing, but what we're talking about today is a road vacation. So, we know that up to the gate, I don't think anyone here is disputing that up to the gate, that road is public. And the state legislature has given, and this county has used this tool many times, is taking a formerly public road private, whether due to a change in use over time, whether someone's trying to combine parcels or has acquired a new parcel and wants to move their fence line or gate. It's, it's not uncommon. In fact, there's only been two denials in the past, and as we'll, we'll dive into this, it's, it's, they weren't even really denials. But this has been, again, a, Iron County has consistently vacated public streets by request in situations like this one, and denied requests or tabled in others that would landlock private owners. And again, we need to do this because we don't want to be criminals for moving our fence and our gate and locking out from what we view as a private road. So, when we have an existing walkway or avenue or highway, August 27th of 2012, Steve Platt, this is one of the two denials, and as you'll see, it's not really a denial. Steve Platt introduced a proposal to vacate an avenue in Newcastle. This was just plating cleanup, right? But there were going to be several internal lots that would be landlocked with no access, right? So, rather than a denial or any kind of motion, the county commission simply took a position of no action because they needed to gather more time to ensure that this could be done in a way that wasn't going to harm the neighbors past that vacated portion of the street. 2015, in April, there was another one on Kitty Hawk Road. Joe Melling came in and, and represented Coal Creek Irrigation. There were some right-of-ways established over by I-15 for the irrigation company that over time, as, as the roads had changed and been moved around as they do, Coal Creek, or rather Coal Creek Irrigation wanted to clean up these records and make sure that some of the formerly public accesses were now out of the public domain, made the request, and that was approved. Another one in May of 2015, this one is, is probably the most analogous to the current situation. So, we have out by, what's this called, Cedar Valley Acres, give or take a half mile or so, off of Lund Highway. So, the minutes say Doug Grimshaw, licensed surveyor, represented Dean Hyde, the adjacent property, property owner. Doug explained that the portion of Spring A, Avenue, sorry, I added a space in there somehow, Spring Avenue, to be vacated, was owned by Mr. Hyde on both sides, and that the vacation would not cut off access to any other owners. He also explained that the proposed vacation was very short, and by combining it with adjacent parcels, his use of the parcels would be greatly enhanced. So, Alma Adams, Dale Brinkerhoff, Dave Miller voted to approve. So, you can see on the map where there was a road, when he bought both sides of the road, came in, wanted to fence off or gate or whatever he's doing to, to better use his property because, because of the weird shapes, and that was approved. Because, again, no other member of the public was going to be harmed. April 10th of 2017, Reed Erickson explained that this was to vacate certain alleyways within the Castle Town, Townsite. And again, this was kind of a plating cleanup. These were old, kind of grandfathered-in alleyways. So, Alma Adams, Mike Blake, Dale Brinkerhoff vote in favor. August of 2018, again, this was the Allard Ranch subdivision over, I believe this was Frank Nichols, right? Or was that the other one? Sorry, I am. Oh, I don't think this was the Frank Nichols one, sorry. I've, this one, though, this was an old easement, required access for a water system, and since needs phase, needs change over time, it was no longer needed. The public wasn't going to be injured by vacating that public access, so it was voted and approved. August of 2018, this was, again, at the Newcastle Townsite, cleaning up the plating. It, they needed specifically to amend these so that the parcels would be large enough to build without having to build on the property line. Again, no private owners were going to be harmed. So, Alma Adams, Mike Blake, Dale Brinkerhoff vote aye. We have January of 2019, these ones were Green Meadow Acres Road realignment. So, again, the original road on this one was never used, so the uses were different than anticipated, and even though it was a public dedicated street, the commission, Paul, Commissioner Cousins, this was the first one that you were on, so, they, again, this one was approved because it wasn't going to harm any other private property owners. Now, we do have the, the last one, the most recent was in 2020, and this one, again, wasn't quite a denial because it, they weren't voting on a road vacation per se. There was a petitioner that came and asked for a road to be vacated, but after looking at the code, their petition did not meet the criteria of a petition in state code. There were some other comments as well, and so the commission did move to deny the request, but because the, it didn't have the, the necessary elements of a petition as, as you would see in, normally in a petition that state law calls for. So, anyway, that one was denied unanimously, Alma Adams, Mike Blake, and Paul Cousins. So, what we have here, and this is my last slide, so it's not too bad. This is, again, our request for a partial road vacation. This parcel specifically was obtained by the property owner not long ago, owns all the property to the north of this. Even the state of Utah is not claiming that this is an access to public lands. There is, you know, between a few other things with some, some wanting to shore up the gate and everything else, wanting to ensure that, there were some vandalism incidents earlier this year and a few other things, just in shoring that up, we wanted to make sure that we have the ability to use this property as an expansion of the property that are north. In the past, those are approved as long as there are no private owners beyond that haven't approved or otherwise a public highway accessing land. And again, this is not a request to, to simply ask the commission to vacate a, or, or deem it a public street. a, uh, or, or deem it a public street, um, that we're, that we've got to the south of us. We already know, I don't think anyone's disputing, this is a public street up to the gate. Whether or not this commission, uh, this commission doesn't need to find whether that road has been, uh, public or private north of the gate, except to the extent that you're determining harm to the public. Um, and again, there are, uh, some that have either, uh, trespassed or, or used that in the past, but there is overwhelming evidence that, uh, for the most part, uh, at least for the last seven, eight decades, that property has been locked, uh, at least regularly with the intention of disrupting the public's use. Uh, it really shouldn't fall under a public highway statute anyway. Um, so what we're asking is for what we know to be public to be deemed private, at least north of where the county's, uh, uh, plan is for access. We want to work with the county on, uh, access for transportation, but we want to be able to do so without being criminally cited. Any other questions for me at this time?
So just to be clear, the, the vacations past the expressway where the Enick Road would tie into it? So there'd be full.
Well, and that's, that's why we worked so closely with, with the county staff, the, um, Reed Erickson and Richard Wilson, um, is because, you know, it's not necessarily our business where the county puts its road or its beltway in the, in the future. But we don't want to, we also don't want to make major investments in property alterations and then have, uh, you know, get caught up in whatever proceedings in the future, right? So we, we want to be good neighbors, uh, we want to be able to improve the property, but also be conscious. So we, we actually set that roundabout at the center line of the wash right there. It, it's our understanding that the county will likely use that as the access. And so, um, the initial request did bring it to the south end of the property line, which would be more analogous with past requests. Um, but because of that concern with the county, we did want to make sure that we're, uh, recognizing that and, and move it to the center line.
Proposed location of the belt route's pretty, pretty solid there, but it's still a little bit fluid in other areas, so that could move a little bit. So just so there's no, you know, if this is approved, just so we have a clear understanding that this entitles that old Enick Road to tie into the express route, the belt route.
Right, and, and we're not disputing whether Enick Road is public or private up to the gate. Because we acknowledge that it's always been public, uh, up to the gate. Um, and we're just asking that it be, uh, that that public use be, that's currently in use, be vacated, um, past the point where the commission feels is appropriate. Um, uh, we feel that we can work with where it's at now. It seems that county staff are okay with where that's at as well. And then in the future, as, as, uh, the county, you know, I, I don't know if that's a three-year or thirty-year thing, when that, uh, belt route may be expected, but, but we do want to make sure that we have that in mind as we go forward, knowing that that may change.
Any other questions for Mr. Melling?
I don't think so.
And Commissioner Blake, your, your property, I didn't want you to feel left out, but your property is harder to find than.
That's because I've, I've got none. I've, yeah, I've. No, I, yeah.
So.
Yeah, good luck. If you find some, let me know.
Yeah, oh, I will. Yeah, they, anyway, okay, thank you for your time. If there are any other questions, feel free. Come on up.
Can you tell us your name one more time?
Worth Grimshaw.
Thank you.
And, um, I'd like to say that, uh, a number of those affidavits are wrong. About nineteen fifty-six, when, uh, Mr. Melling specified that, uh, uh, Mr. Burdette went, was out there and there was a, uh, no trespassing sign and he turned around. There was no gate where that gate is. The gate he would have turned around at was south of there. And that gate happens to be on property that is owned by my family at present. And there is a, if, if we could bring back the, uh, the map, that first map that was used, uh, with the arrows and the right-of-way.
Got it. That one?
That one.
Let me. There is a right-of-way right here that Norman Grimshaw gave to Lauren Jones, Spencer's father. And it goes from right here to right there. Now, the property Spencer has brought, uh, comes to right here. We own this property down here. That right-of-way ends right there, but it doesn't state anything and there is no right-of-way down here other than a prescriptive right-of-way. There's never been. There is no sixty-six-foot right-of-way going from there to Enick Town.
There's a prescriptive right-of-way and about a quarter of a mile, a little more than that maybe, to the south, which would be down. There is another gate and that gate is approximately twenty to twenty-three feet wide. Now, when we purchased this property in nineteen, or in two thousand fourteen, I was going to close that gate, that other gate, so that we could graze our animals there to perfect the green belt. Mr. Jones met me at the gate and, uh, explained to me that he was not going to let me close that gate. I was not attempting to lock the gate. I simply wanted to close it so we could utilize the property more fully. And he explained to me that I probably couldn't withstand him in court. That he was willing to spend, I believe it was up to two hundred thousand dollars on legal fees to make sure that gate remained open. Now, I wasn't going to lock the gate. I didn't care about people having access through it, but I wanted to be able to control my animals there. I would like to say that anything, anyone who thinks there was a gate where Spencer's gate is at the moment, before nineteen eighty, minimum, is an error. There was no gate there. And there was no gate there for quite a while after that, I'm positive. Now, I know most of those people who wrote those affidavits. I know that some of them are not capable of telling whether they're, that's correct or not. I'd like to examine them and see what the dates on those affidavits are. Because I know of a number of those people who are not mentally capable at this point, I'm sorry to say, of, of swearing to what they did or didn't know. And there was a no trespassing sign at that other gate. Back approximately about nineteen fifty-six or shortly thereafter, Mr. Jones's grandfather decided he didn't want people driving out through his property. So he went not to where Spencer's gate is at present, but to that other gate. And across that gate, he put a large log chain, heavy duty. Early one morning, in the dark, he was going out to North Springs to do his chores. And he forgot he'd put the log chain up there. And he remembered it just about fifty feet before he got to that chain. He slammed on the brakes and there were skid marks for that period of time until he hit the chain, which happened to go up over the front of his nineteen fifty-whatever Studebaker pickup and came back and luckily for him, the steel posts up the front of the door and up the sides of the windshield were heavy duty enough that when that log chain hit them, it stopped the pickup rather than just cutting right on through it and him. Those bars on that went from the hood like that, where that chain had gone across there. If there had been a gate where it's being claimed the gate is and, and the gate was closed, he would not have needed to do that. He wasn't even on his property. He had no right to put that chain there, but he didn't want people going across his property. And again, I don't blame him for that. Nobody does. That property at that time belonged to Norman Grimshaw, who gave Lauren that sixty-six-foot right-of-way there. Now, if there had been a gate over there had it, that could be closed where Spencer's gate is at present, there would have been no need to try and stop people at that other gate. And I can tell you that people in the valley, once they found out Mr. Jones was okay and not injured, chuckled just a little bit that he had got caught in his own trap. But I can tell you the, the chain came down immediately because I think he realized that not only could have that been the end for him, but if someone else had been driving down that road and had not known the chain was there, it would have sliced their car right in half along with anybody who was in it. Now, there was no need for him to do that if there had been a gate where the gate is at present. But he did, and that happened. I was there not when it happened, obviously, that was early in the morning before daylight. But I went down there that day when I heard about it. And you could see where the wheels of the truck were locked up for fifty feet before it got to the chain. And so there are precedents here and there. The roadway from Mr. Jones's property to Enick City is a prescriptive right-of-way. There is no deeded right-of-way there. And if there was one filed in nineteen sixty, and it was filed fraudulently because we owned that property starting in two thousand fourteen, and we have never given anyone permission to file a right-of-way on that road. It's a prescriptive road and it's approximately twenty-five feet wide. It is not a city road or a county road. There was a county road surveyed to the south side of the property we own, which was sixty-six feet wide. It stops at the south boundary of our property and it's in Enick City. And Enick City did not much care about it because when, uh, a Mr. Trujillo, who built a house right there, built his house, he flattened out a part of the hill to the east and pushed the dirt out to the west. And now the slope of that road is in that sixty-six-foot right-of-way. Half of it covering the east half of that sixty-six feet. So there's only a thirty-three-foot road there and the, the stakes are there, uh, as surveyed by Mr. Watson, to show exactly where that road is supposed to be. Somebody's going to have to put a twenty-foot retaining wall there to be able to use the other half of that road. It is still our contention that that road, that gate was not there in nineteen fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty. And I've used that road enough and have been familiar with that property long enough since I did all of Norman Grimshaw's, uh, cowboy-ing for him, if you will, since I was fourteen years old, which would have been in the early fifties. And so I'm familiar with that property. I'm familiar with that road. And I can tell you, there was no gate there. There was no fence going east to the hill. And when we talk about the broken hills to the north, we're talking about the property between the Blue Hill where the, the TV towers are up there and Rush Lake to the west, where the black ridges are. I've been out that road to Parrow and Gap on my horse, in my car, at least a hundred times. There is no difficult roads out there. It's certainly not four-wheeled. The only bad places are getting across Braphett's Creek. And I do know something about Braphett's Creek. On the State Water Engineers map, it will tell you that back in the early time, there were four gentlemen who owned all the rights to Braphett's Creek. One of them being Q.L. Adams, who is Alma Adams's grandfather and also my grandfather. One of them being Myron Jones. One of them being William Henry Grimshaw, who is also my grandfather.
Mr. Grimshaw, is this pertaining to the road issue, this, this water issue?
I'm just telling you that I'm aware of the.
Let's keep it germane to the.
Okay. I think I'm probably done. There's also the fact Mr. Melling stated about a road down to Johnson's Fort, Johnson Fort Road, which is, uh, the road to my house. That property under that road belongs to Clark's. However, I have a perpetual right-of-way on it, uh, forever, that is fifty feet wide. And that, uh, I obtained when I sold that property to, uh, someone else back in the early eighties when things were financially pretty rotten. Anyway, I think that it's no question that North Enick Road went through the Jones property and north to Parrow and Gap for way more than ten years and was open to the public during all that time, anytime they wanted to go there. Thank you.
So, Mr. Grimshaw, I have a, oh, go ahead. I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead and I have one too.
Well, my question is, it seems like, leading up to this, I've seen the Facebook, the social media posts and probably one of the strongest arguments was that this has been a recognized road, that it's on the maps, is old Enick Road all the way through the Jones property. But yet you just, you just stated that it's never been a recognized county or city road.
I, I just say that, stated it's a prescriptive right-of-way, which doesn't mean it's not a recognized road. Okay?
Um, the little easement that goes across that you said was on your, what, I don't understand what that is, that little on the.
It's just simply an easement that is like two hundred feet east and west and sixty-six foot wide that Norman Grimshaw gave to Lauren Jones for whatever reason, I have no idea.
It doesn't make sense to me, that's why I was asking.
Norman Grimshaw owned the property to which we now own, uh, about four property owners.
It doesn't go anywhere.
No.
It just goes to the property line.
It goes to the, the.
From the road to the property line.
Uh, the Joneses owned the property to the right there, to the east. And, and so from the prescriptive road over to the left here, where the curve is, over to that, uh, he gave them an, an easement across there. Now, why? I have no idea. And he's, he's gone, we can't ask him.
Yeah.
And Lauren's gone, we can't ask him. But the Joneses owned the property to the north above the cul-de-sac, the upper one there, and they owned down the east side, right down that line there, they owned the property on that side. And I have no idea why they, was a need for that, but I'm not contesting it. It's, I've seen.
I was just wondering. So I have one more question. So why was there not a, a lawsuit or anything else when that was locked? I mean, it's all these years later and you guys just went around. I'm, I'm just curious.
It takes money for lawsuits. And since the gate has been locked, uh, Mr. Jones is the one who has had the money. We, we haven't had money to do that. We've been scrambling to hang on to what we have and sometimes it takes everything.
You didn't come to the county either, right? You didn't come to the county to.
No.
A jack or.
I thought about coming to the county years ago, but my cousin Alma Adams was on the county commission. I certainly didn't want to put him in the middle of anything. And.
It's just a question.
Yeah.
And that was going to be my, one of my questions too, is I've been a commissioner for going on five years and never once has anybody called me and said, hey, and complained about that road, that gate being locked, never, not once.
I'm not saying, uh.
And if it was that big of an issue, I would think somebody. And if it was that big of an issue, I would think somebody within my tenure as a commissioner would have called me and said, hey, I'm concerned that this is a public road and it's locked.
I think most people who would like to use that road don't understand that that is even an issue that they could have contested.
Did you have a question?
No. No, that was answered.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
Mike Clark. I am one of the Clarks that owns the property getting to Wirth's House. I've lived in Cedar and Enix my whole life. I'm neighbors to the Grimshaws, neighbors to the Joneses. In fact, I have Spencer's property leased now. That gate, I can think back, that gate's been there since the early seventies and locked, that I know of myself. I know people that used to park clear down on SR-130 Minersville Highway, walk a mile up through my place to sneak into the Joneses to hunt pheasants because they knew the gate was locked. Anyway, that gate's been there since the early seventies. And I mean, I'm sixty-one, and I can, we bought a brand-new truck at that time, and I remember going to the Joneses and helping Lauren haul his sheep. Back in the day, everybody helped everybody move their animals in the spring and in the fall. So that gate's been locked since, since the, probably seventy-one at least that I know of. I mean, it's just been that way.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Melissa Grimshaw. I don't think anybody is saying that Spencer doesn't have a right to gate off his property to keep his animals in and so on. People put no trespassing signs all the time on their private property, and a lot of times the public just assumes that they're not allowed access there. But the thing is with this road, it has been used continuously for at least ten years, if not longer. There are several maps which some people would have us believe some maps are accurate and some maps are not accurate. And I think the commission would be doing the public and the county a disservice by not looking into this further and seeing what our county regulations and codes are. Because obviously, private landowners, they want to be able to take care of their property, to keep people off from destroying things and so on. But the fact of the matter is, is the public and the private back up against each other all the time. There are things like this that happen quite often, and just because somebody does not like somebody accessing through their property does not mean they have the right to lock the property up so that the public cannot do it. Just by showing on this map, other maps, that you can see that the public has wanted to go further and has had to turn around so that they cannot access that property. For how many years? How long has that turnaround been there? It's been there because the public has not been able to access the road and the public lands that are north of this property, so they have had to turn around. There is a camera up there. There are signs saying, "No trespassing private property." If I'm not mistaken, we could probably look. I have no idea. But if somebody goes to go through that property and had, this has been like that for a while, they would have the police called on them. So then it gets around that you are not allowed to access that property even though there was a public right-of-way through there, a public easement, the private or the prescriptive easement. I think if the county would look at the prescriptive easement laws in the state of Utah, they would see that this road would qualify for that. Yeah, there's been other cases. There's been cases that said, yes, the property owner has the right to lock it. There's also been ones that said, no, the property owner is not allowed to lock it because the public does have a right to go through this piece of property. So I think the county would need to look at those things and look at what their own codes and regulations say when it comes to this. I believe there was a case a number of years ago with, when Pug Yuri was on the commission. I mean, I understand that's going a few years back, but I think it has a precedence for this. I think the commission would need to look at that because the thing is this, there's a lot of this type of thing. There's prescriptive easements going through a lot of different public property, and this would set a precedence, wouldn't it, that the public is not allowed to access public roads or public property when it has to pass through private property. You guys all have property. No one wants to be able to have the public just go through willy-nilly, which is true. You shouldn't be able to do that. But this road has been there for a number of years, and there's a number of roads in the county that have been there for a long time and historically have been used by the public to access public lands and state lands. So I think the commission would, it would behoove them to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Spencer Jones, manager and sole owner of North Spring Ranch, the landowner here. Appreciate the comments of Tyler Melling, our general counsel. Just a few clarifications I wanted to bring up here is that Mr. Grimshaw and I have had an adversarial relationship for here some time. Prior to yesterday at approximately 1:30 PM, we were in the same religious congregation together ever since I was a child. My father and Mr. Grimshaw were in that same congregation together unless there was a couple of times, a couple of years that maybe they left the state for other matters. And so there was a great level of trust in the past between Mr. Grimshaw and my father. Mr. Grimshaw, I believe, holds a current certified public accountant designation. He had obtained that and was my father's CPA until the late nineteen nineties when he had made some grave negligent errors with my parents' taxes, and they chose to no longer use him for their services amongst many, many other people. We've had other issues in the past, but the reason why I'm bringing this up is because, as Mr. Melling brought up, with the census of the population of Enix through the years, being in the same congregation, being neighbors, and ultimately having a professional and client relationship, it was one of high trust. And so the times that Mr. Grimshaw or any of his family or the other Mr. Grimshaw, Arlen Grimshaw, was also in the same congregation my entire life and my father's entire life, probably until about twenty-five years ago. And I've had the utmost respect for Arlen Grimshaw, unlike the lack of respect for Mr. Worth Grimshaw. But the access that was done through our property through the years was done by permission. My dad, prior to the problems that occurred because of Mr. Grimshaw and his taxes, I thought they were friends. I have a bill of sale between Worth Grimshaw and my father on a truck, an old truck, and it's handwritten, and it's signed by Mr. Worth Grimshaw, and they traded a truck that we have here today for three ram sheep. And there was a lot of great relationship back then, but it's definitely not there today. So whatever access that was done would have been by permission. A few other things just to clarify is the sign that Burnett was referring to in nineteen fifty-six, that sign was a handmade sign that was done with a wood burner, and that sign was made by Lauren Jones, my father. Shirley Jones, my mother, was on a date with Burnett back in nineteen fifty-six. My parents got married in nineteen fifty-eight. They specifically talked about that sign after that. Burnett was trying to get access to Rush Lake because it was a big dance. I wanted to take my mom at that time to a dance. And when you look at the population of Enix at that time, there was very little lights. There was a very small, little group of homes on Enix Road South and a couple of homes in Stevensville out by the sewer treatment plant and two or three homes there by the Family Dollar there at the intersection of Mid Valley and Minersville. They were trying to get out to this dance, and they came across this gate. So I'm pretty certain that the gate that Burnett was referring to, as well as my mom, my mom would have loved to have come to this meeting. But, you know, she, we had discussed it might be better to not come. She's very hurt because as I acquired this from our family, she in the past had viewed Arlen Grimshaw and his wife Kathy as the utmost friends. In fact, was actually just dancing with Arlen while Kathy was sitting out at the side, some of the old Enix Brass Band dances less than five years ago. But again, it was done by permission. That sign was at that gate location. And in fact, most of the affidavits that were signed either refer to the Jones Gate, not whatever gate, which I appreciate the history of some log gate that's my, one of my predecessors hit. I didn't know that. I love history and I love hearing about that. But most of the affidavits, in fact, I shouldn't say most, all the affidavits either state the Jones Gate, they refer to Fifty-nine-hundred North Enix Road or Six Thousand North Enix Road. And so in my mind, that's a very finite landmark of where that's at. See if there's anything else I wanted to say here. Just a couple other things really quick. This easement that the commission would have questions about right here, Norm Grimshaw had granted that easement to my father prior to work for me. Work and I have had some problems in the past of him acquiring property, not using title companies, not getting title policies, not knowing whatsoever record. There's a whole nother issue pertaining with Enix City of property he acquired and tried doing it some procedure right over recorded easements. But I went in and paid the full value of the entire property for an easement, and he was trying to have lots on and had admitted on record that he didn't have a power of court even though that was there. And so just wanted to clarify here, you can go back to John too. Yeah, so right here, so the easement provided right here, and I know this is a totally different topic, but just to clarify for the record, this is audio and visual going on right now. For the record here, Norm Grimshaw acknowledged, which is the predecessor to Mr. Worth Grimshaw, of all of this property right here, that the end of the legal inscription says that it is to the center line of the existing county road. So Mr. Norm Grimshaw refers and acknowledges that this road here, being a county road at the time he granted the easement, and it was to the center line of that road, which is according to here with C-27, based on the curb tables here, that also match Enix City's record of survey that Enix City has recorded with the legal inscription that this road traversing just happens to be one foot short of my lot here. So even Enix City at that time, even though Enix City's jurisdiction is not this, the annexation policy right here, and that's the reason why it's your menu and jurisdiction that we're at here today. This here, this night here down is-
Enix.
Sorry, Enix City. But the cul-de-sac on that record of survey is held back one foot short of our lot here. So there was no, there was very clear that there was no public utility on there. So I appreciate your time on this. Spent a lot of time on this, we tried being extremely thorough about this. Some of the information might not be able to apply with this application, but I think you need to fill the history between me and some of the people that have commented this evening or this day. So thank you for your time. Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Go to the commission for comments. Or Reed, do you need to talk a little bit more?
Review, I don't know if, John, you can put me back up here and see whether there was anything else in this that you wanted to consider after the public comments. The statutory requirements for notifications were all there, and so your action, and if you want further discussion, we can do that, but the criteria for review and the standard for issuing the vacation is it just says that the petition to vacate a public street or road, and there are these three provisions that all have different notification requirements, but I really wanted to just focus on number four. The legislative body may adopt an ordinance granting a petition to vacate somewhere all public street or utility if the legislative body finds that a good cause exists for the vacation and neither the public interest nor any person will be materially injured by the vacation. That's essentially the criteria for, under the statute, that allows the, we've often said, just in the general interest of the public, weighed against the interest of the private property. So recognizing that it is a public right-of-way, the only way, as stated by Mr. Melling, for them not to be in violation of the ordinance is in order to gate that, it would be required that the county take a formal action to vacate their interest in that right-of-way. And so that's the criteria to do that.
Reed, just a matter of procedure, I don't, I didn't receive an ordinance from you.
Right.
Do you need us to write? I mean, I didn't agendize it either.
Well, there's two, again, each section of the ordinance has a different requirement. There's one that says that it has, that they can do it by ordinance, or the other one that says that it can be done by a plat. We've got a vacation plat.
Okay.
And so that's what we've submitted, is a vacation plat. We can certainly prepare an ordinance if you feel that that's necessary.
Oh, if the code, yeah, it's fine, as long as we're meeting the code.
Any questions?
I would like to say something about the affidavits. So when you sign your name to something, you better be, make sure that the information in that affidavit is correct. So those folks that signed those, I mean, I mean, from worst part, he didn't think that they were correct. But if you were signing anything, and most of them were done previous, none really back to two thousand fourteen and/or before, I would say that those folks wouldn't want to do that and without, without- Come on up.
Was the commission able to examine those affidavits ahead of-
Yeah, I have. Haven't you guys?
Yeah, I've seen copies of the affidavits.
We have?
Yes.
I just wanted to throw that out there. I mean, you don't want to sign your name to something that you, that is incorrect, I would believe. I don't think you would. Any other?
Well, one thing that I, you know, I've followed up on knowing, you know, in the interim between when we opened the public hearing a month ago and today, and Mr. Jones just brought it to attention, just barely. You know, I looked at the county road plat. I also spoke with Enix City just to try and get a history with Rob Dotson at Enix City to try and get a little bit of history and just understand that area, you know, not, making sure that I understood it. And, right, the county, I mean, the county road ends a foot before that gate. Not something that was very telling to me. You know, we don't have, you know, even though the road may be on a map, we don't have any record of that being any kind of a public road. You know, in fact, I mean, really, where the road comes to an end and where that cul-de-sac is, cul-de-sac, wide spot in the road that's a turnaround, I mean, it literally ends, the county record ends a foot shy of that gate. That's, I mean, very telling to me. You know, I mean, on a legal side, I mean, put relationships aside. I mean, you've got to put, you know, when we make these decisions, you have to, whether you like a guy or whether you don't like a guy or whether you agree with everything that a guy does, I mean, what it really boils down to is the law and the evidence-
And the ordinances.
That pertains, that pertains to those laws and ordinances is what that really boils down to. That pertains, that, that pertains to those laws and ordinances is, is what that really boils down to.
And we hate to be in the middle of disputes of these personal nature, nature. I mean, that, that's hard for us too. We don't like that at all. But, but like Mike said, you know, it's, it's the, you know, if they, they were over, going there by permission, it sounded like the ward party and the hunting and that type of thing. And, and the due diligence that, that Mr. Jones has, has done with all of these affidavits. I mean, that's, I mean, that gives us a lot of information that we wouldn't have otherwise.
Well, and, and I mean, in, in my mind, we have to rely on those affidavits because many of those, you know, many, many of those individuals with those affidavits aren't with us anymore. I mean, I recognized or knew personally just about every one of those persons that signed an affidavit. Many of them are deceased. You know, the fact that, you know, this wasn't prepared. I guess when, when a lot of those people signed those affidavits 10 years ago, they were a little younger. They were, you know, we don't have any evidence that there was any tampering with those affidavits or anything that would indicate that they weren't signed when they said they were signed in 2014 or before. And, you know, there was just no evidence that there's anything nefarious about those affidavits. They all appear, appear to be in order, they're notarized, they appear to be.
There was no evidence of notarial fraud.
No, I mean, I, I mean, I, I recognize the signatures of some of the notaries on those affidavits.
Yeah, some of the notaries might have been a bit close to the, to the issue, but I mean, they were, they all looked properly notarized.
Right, I, I just don't, I don't see, I, I don't see, you know, me personally, I, I don't see where I could deny this request based just specifically on, on statute ordinance and the evidence that's put forward.
Just a couple of comments. Just going back to my comment to Mr. Grimshaw's. I've been the commissioner nearly five years and no one's ever called me with a complaint that that gate was logged. And I know it's been logged because I've been out there several times. You got to be real careful what you post on Facebook because some attorney might find pictures of your property. But that property that Mr. Melling references, property that Cousins Family's owned since the 50s, when my dad bought it when he moved from Wyoming, and that's a tricky piece of property because even though we don't have, we have a, a road on there with a, with a locked gate. I actually helped build that road when I was in high school with our cat. But it's tricky because this piece of property is, is world famous for some of the bike trails that go through it. There's, there's a, I can't even remember the name of it, but Golden Street, one corner of our property is a, a bike trail that you can get on the internet and watch videos of and, and, and it's very famous. And, and other people in the community walk up, it's, it's a, it's a really popular site to walk up and cross at many different locations. And, and, and for years, and it's very difficult, it's not just one gate or one road. It's, it's a many entrances and exits on our property. And so we've been very conscious as a family to make sure at least every couple of years or even every year, we've been very, we go over there and our whole family gets together and we, we have a person stationed at every, every kind of common entrance or exit to the property, and we say this property is closed this, today. And, and we do that so that it doesn't become a prescriptive easement for hikers and bikers and all those things. And so it's very, and that's one reason I post that on social media, is that's a tool at my disposal to make it known that we did that as a family. I posted pictures, I posted evidence and, and so. Because these, these things, as you can see, get very complicated. And so that's something we've done. But anyway, that's, I think the evidence has been very clear, like, like my other, my fellow commissioners have stated that with these affidavits, there's a lot of evidence there that's overwhelming, so.
One more thing, it's hard to be a commissioner because you have friends on, on both sides. We love the Grimshaws, we love the Joneses, you know, we, we don't, we don't want to, you know, we're doing it by the evidence and, and the, the things that have been brought forward. And we hope that, that, that there won't be hard feelings because we do love both of the families. So anyway, it's, it's a hard thing being a commissioner sometimes. I'd just say that.
I guess is it, well, is it my turn?
It's your turn.
Ready for a?
I think, I'll be ready for a motion.
I would move for approval of the partial road vacation of Enic Road, public road located near 5900 North Enic Road, approximately 0.41 acre, 60 feet, 66 feet wide by 238.39 feet in length, including a 50-foot radius cul-de-sac, all within the north quarters. North one half, southeast quarter of Section 6 Township, 35 South Range, 10 West, Salt Lake Basin Meridian, Iron County, within APND dash 171 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move to public appointments, public comments. This is an opportunity for a three-minute comment per speaker for public comment. Should not repeat others' comments and be nice. Is there anybody who'd like to talk? Reed?
I didn't get this on the agenda, so I've got to bring it up here.
Oh, boy.
This is just simply a discussion to, to make you aware of requests that we have had for the, the provisions that were made available in the 2019 legislative session for what is referred to as a public infrastructure district. And we've had several requests for those, and in fact, I have a meeting tomorrow. And part of the reason for the urgency of the discussion is to get a general feel from the county. I know you can't make a decision, and I'm not asking for a decision on this, but what I would like to do is set up a meeting with staff and commissioners and talk about the ramifications of these public infrastructure districts and how they work and maybe set some parameters of when we feel that they would be appropriate and when they wouldn't. But in essence, I wanted to just give you a copy of what they are. That, that's explained. This is simply a flyer that was prepared by, I just pulled off of the internet yesterday, or this morning, on how, how they were created and what they do. But in essence, it's a, it's an, it's a tool to allow a developer or a property owner to set up a taxing district that's controlled by an elected board of the owners of the property. So what happens is if a property owner wants to set up a district to tax themselves for the infrastructure, then the bond that's created through a municipal bond to cover the infrastructure is then repaid by the obligation of a tax that's put in place by that taxing entity. So they become a taxing entity. And so what happens is they can put in the infra, public infrastructure, it can be used for public infrastructure. And developers are starting to use this as a tool to, to, they, they figured out it's a, it's a simpler, cheaper way to develop property that allows them to have those who come later pay for it, pay for those improvements. And we used to do them in, in, we used to have what they called SIDs or, you know, improvement districts or special improvement districts or something.
Assessment areas.
That allowed for developers to develop property without having to, because it, you know, like in the 90s and early 2000s and even in the 80s, it was harder for banks to loan on infrastructure, and so they used those. But there are several challenges with them, and, and yet I don't want to just say they're not worth looking at. But I think that we as a county ought to evaluate some criteria in advance of when we would consider them and when we wouldn't. Whether we would consider them for, for large, you know, commercial and industrial developments and, or maybe, you know, even off-site improvements for large residential developments or something, but maybe not within the development itself where those taxpayers are paying for it and, and how they can be set up. The county and the taxing entity that establishes them creates a document to begin with that sets out the criteria of how they'll be operated. But then they have a lot of discretion after that, and they're the sole controllers. The county doesn't have a, a seat on their board. They're a taxing entity. And so I think we have to use them carefully, and I just wanted to maybe get a little direction from the county that I can tell developers tomorrow and as they call, you know, that we can set some criteria of how they would be applied and when we would consider them or not. And so if you'd be open to that, I would, I'll set that up and, you know, involve the, the right people and those that are interested in participating in that, and that we can kind of review that and maybe establish some criteria for the next meeting. If that would be okay.
Be great.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's my public comment.
You went over three, you went over three minutes. You sure?
It was pretty close.
Did you have a plat to sign, Reed?
I don't have the Mylar.
Okay.
I'll have to get it from the engineer and then we'll sign the Mylar for the vacation.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Grimshaw, do you have something to say?
He must have a public comment.
I'm Arlen Grimshaw. I've had a realization that hit me pretty hard. All, all that time I've used that road, I assumed it was mine. And I guess I had access to that road more so than most people because I had permission.
Because you was a friend, right?
Right. So I loved the Joneses, always have. And I just, my perception was just one way. And it took this whole thing to realize what I had was not mine, it was permission. Okay?
Very good. Thank you for.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you for.
Thank you for that.
Well, thank you all for, it's you're in the middle. Thank you for being in the middle.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, let's see. Let's go to item number three, discussion and possible approval of Utah indigent. Was there any other public comments? I'm sorry. Okay. Discussion on possible approval of Utah indigent, indigent, sorry, I can't talk. Defense grant application for July 1st, 2023 through June 30th. Candace?
Good morning. As the commission is aware, there's a number of independent contracts that are held and funded by IDC. Simply, we're just asking for those contracts to be renewed. They run fiscal, along with the, the state's fiscal year, so those are up. We've circulated those to the county attorney's office. Sounds like they've approved those. So we're just asking that the commission sign up.
Approve them. I would move for approval for the Utah indigent defense grant application for July 1st, 2023 through July, June 30th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have something for me to sign today, John, for that? Okay.
In fact, I didn't.
There's a whole bunch of them then.
Okay, well, just wait.
Do you need to go to each one of them?
You've got all the others too.
I do not need to, you guys can sign them at your leisure.
But.
Do you want me to email them?
You're on, you're on for the next three items.
Three items. Do you need to explain anything?
Want to just take care of all those?
Or should we just need to?
You need to vote on each one individually, right?
Right.
So do you want to talk about number four at all? These are all, you want to just give us a description real quick?
Of the, of the each contract.
All read it. Discussion on possible approval of contract for Iron County Administrative Public Defender Services is number four. You want to?
So, and that's, that's for your contract, correct?
That's for the APD.
That's for yours, and then we've got Shane's, and then we've got Angela's, right? Angelica.
Angelica, yeah. So I can, do you want me to give a brief explanation?
We need to vote on them individually, so let's go ahead and, I mean, is there any question on, on number four, any discussion? Thank you.
No.
So entertain a motion for that.
I'd move for approval of the contract for Iron County Administrative Public Defender Services for Candace Reed.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Number five, and this is discussion on possible approval of Fifth District Public Defender Contract for Shane Manuelli.
So he's coming back.
Yeah, so just brief explanation. This was a, this is a one-year grant-funded IDC position, which created the four public defenders. So we have two district court judges and then there's two public defenders assigned to each, which works well. One of those positions is funded by IDC, so that's why it's a one-year grant-funded. It was previously held by Robbie Winterton, but he did not renew his contract, so we did open that up. Mr. Manuelli did apply, so he was granted that position.
Okay.
Okay.
I would move for approval of the Fifth District Public Defender Contract for Shane Manuelli.
I will second.
Okay, it's been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number six, discussion on possible approval of parental defense services, social worker contract for Fifth District for Angelica Judd.
So this is a social worker contract that we, we actually opened it quite a while ago, but we weren't able to actually fill it until about November, December. But then, so she's been working with our office for about seven months, doing a really good job. We asked that her contract be, and her position be renewed.
I'd move for approval of the Parental Defense Services Social Worker Contract for Fifth District for Angelica Judd.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Please tell Angelica, hey, she's one of my favorite people.
Well, I'll be seeing her shortly.
I think that's all of yours.
Yeah, that should be.
Signed.
And we'll get those scanned and emailed to you.
Yeah, that'll be fine. Thank you. Any other questions or?
Up the good work.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is, let's see. Review and possible approval of the results of the tax cell held on Thursday, May 25th, 2023.
So in front of you is the results from our tax cell last month. We had 59 properties. It was small and it went really good. Public surplus did a great job again. So in that cell, our total fees and taxes to the county was $11,965.52. Collected all that fine. The 2310 was just the admin fee and the recording fee. And then that left a balance of that 193,65110 that can be claimed in the surplus funds so far. We haven't had that, but it's been a month. So, but it went really good. We didn't have any properties left. That was awesome.
Great.
Have to deal with that.
Every one of them sold.
Yep.
This is working good, isn't it, this online?
It's been really good. I liked it.
That's awesome.
Awesome.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to.
Okay, I would move for approval of the results of the tax cell held on Thursday, May 25th, 2023.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
Discussion on possible approval for professional service agreement contracts for mental health professional therapist Tina Warhurst and P, and, and peace?
Peace, balance, and joy.
Peace, balance, and joy consulting. Sorry, I expect that to be a person's name. Something's weird here.
Well, and in the contract I handed you today, Commissioner Cousins, it, it does say instead of Tina Warhurst, it's a mindful life, and that's her practice, just to aid in any practitioners that may be moving in or out of their practice so that we don't have to keep updating contracts.
Oh, I see.
That makes it a little easier. So these contracts came about because back in January, February, we were undergoing like a desk audit through FOCA. They just do those every year. They kind of spot check some things and they've been also checking up on policies and procedures that are through the county or the CJC itself. And with that, one of those was contracts for professional services. And with that, I discovered that the last contracts. And with that, I discovered that the last contracts that were signed were in 2018 and expired in 2019. So with that, we decided to go through, you know, a good procurement process and put it out, had it listed for about a month. And everyone who wanted to had the opportunity to apply to contract with us.
How many did you have? Just curious.
We had five and then we interviewed four.
Nice.
One backed out for their own reasons, but, um, so with that, we interviewed, we had a panel that included CJC staff, county attorney's office, a local mental health provider, and also the mental health, shoot, I don't know what her title is at the attorney general's office, but she helps with the mental health side of things. And they were all on the panel. We came to an agreement of who to contract with based on those interviews and information we had in their resumes. And moved forward with that. The contract was developed. I went through finding the things that we specifically needed. And Sam helped to make sure, Sam Woodall helped to make sure that we had the things that the county needed. I also got some input from the attorney general's office. So basically this includes an intersection of what Voca, the scope of the CJC and the county, all the things that we need. So hopefully haven't missed anything in there. I'm just making it really clear. Commissioner Cousins, when I gave you that, you did ask about in-school therapy. There is a piece in there that does say if there is a CJC client, so it has to be specific to, to that.
Existing client.
Mm-hmm. If, if there are reasons that the child would need to be seen at the school and if that is something the provider would like to offer, that's, that's only a small exception. To be a CJC client, they either need to have been interviewed at the center, had a medical exam at the center. Or there are some rare cases where there's just a staffing, which there might be a DCFS case, but we couldn't, for whatever reason, bring the child in for an interview. Sometimes it's parents, sometimes the child's too young. Or there's just interesting circumstances here and there where they may qualify for services, but for whatever reason, we don't get them there and we do a staffing. So those are obviously going to be a case by case and carefully evaluated.
Okay. Thank you for that. So let's entertain a.
Motion?
I'll move for approval for the professional service agreement contract for mental health professional therapist Tina Warhurst and Peace, Balance and Joy Consulting.
Second.
Been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please. If you want to just go down, he'll take care of you.
Nine, resolution 2023-9, a resolution of the county legislative body of Iron County notifying Cedar City that the county legislative body is not seeking to impose a tax under code 59-12-70 ET.SEQ. And so, Mr. Bittman, you're only an hour and a half past what I told you, sorry.
That was a long discussion.
It was.
So this is Cedar City's RAP tax. You can use it for arts, parks and recreation. That's what we use it for up northeast to fund part of Hoagel Zoo and larger entities like that. The way the statute's set up, it says they don't want the county imposing one and then the city imposing another one. So we're here to ask that you guys tell us you're not going to do it this year and we're going to seek to have it re-up for another 10 years.
What's it worth to you?
Yeah, over the last, I think we've had it for 15 years. There's a couple of million dollars that have been generated off that one penny on a dollar. So.
Wow.
Kind of worth a lot.
And, and it's gone into a lot of fun, good, great things.
We had 23 arts groups apply this year. It's varied as Shakespeare, who typically gets the lion's share of it. And then there's Cedar City Community Band. They were playing at a lot of the railroad stuff last week.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I was just kidding. I didn't want to create blackmail over the mic and.
I think the arena gets some of it. The arena.
So the Heritage Festival, Heritage and Livestock Festival.
Yeah.
They get, I think in range of about 20, 25,000 a year.
Nice, yeah.
To help run that show.
Yeah, that's fabulous.
It's, it's a lot of people.
Okay. I'd move for approval of the resolution 2023-9, a resolution of the county legislative body of Iron County notifying Cedar City that the county legislative body is not seeking to impose a tax under code 59-12-70.
Second.
Been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
There you go.
Yep, thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks for coming, Mr. Bittman.
90 minutes of waiting, 30 seconds of talking.
He knows how that works. Number 10, discussion on possible approval for a request for proposal bid contract for chip sealing of the Iron County Fairgrounds. Mr. Haynesworth, you've been waiting a while too.
Yeah.
You need to have had to sit through a commission every time. It's good for you.
So this proposal, RFP is for the actual crack seal and seal coat there at the fairgrounds.
In the mezzanine area?
Yes.
Yeah. It was, it's really, we, I looked at it and was very concerned that we'd lose it if we didn't get it sealed. There's huge cracks.
You get water under it and up freezes and.
So I looked at the proposals. I've used a lot of different chip and crack seal in my business over the last 30 years. And then I've used, we used, uh, one of the, we've used several in the county for different things. But I am, I'm just going to say I'm partial to the Spencer Asphalt. I don't have a connection to Spencer Asphalt, but the work they've done in the past has been just excellent. They did the, they did the senior center. When we added on, they did the additional parking lot repairs and, and chip seal. And then they've done our cabinet shop for, I think, the last two or three times. And even though they haven't always been the cheapest, I've always used them in my personal, or my son's business now, but our personal. And that's, you know, that's, I would be a little bit lean that way. There, I think it's about a $500 difference between low bid and them. I think one, one was 8,300, one was about 8,500. So I don't know. What, what do you?
One was 83, one was 88.
Eight, oh, 88. Sorry, yeah, it was 500. Yeah, right.
I, I think it says a lot to experience with the company. You know, we want a really nice job done and where you've had that experience. I hadn't had any experience with any of them.
Neither have I.
Do we have to go a little bit, John, or?
You don't. No, you have, you have some discretion there.
Yeah, I mean, it's fairly close, but, but we definitely, you know, have some experience with the one company.
And it's not saying anything bad about the little bit or either. I mean, I just haven't experienced.
No, and, and sometimes I think you, it's, it comes down to the judgment of the, of the body, whether it be, you know, these guys and their consideration are you and yours. You know, if, if somebody's obviously lowballing it, there might be concerns of another nature, you know, so. Where these guys are close and where you've got, I mean, I think it's, you have to be able to kind of justify your decision, but ultimately it's a legislative decision. So if you have some sweetheart deal, that can come back and bite you too. You know, the objectivity, the purpose of the sunshine through the bidding process is to, is to cast that sunshine on it and where, you know. So I, I think your, all your arguments seem pretty, so, Sam, I'm talking like an attorney.
There was another, there was another bid too. There were three bids and the other one was 10. So it was a couple more. So it was quite a bit more, but where that experience, I don't know. What do you think, Mike?
I'm gonna, I agree. I, I mean, the bids are, the bids are very similar and we're, you know, we've got a, a good track record with the one company. That's.
That's important.
I'm good with that.
Yeah. Okay.
So my turn?
Yep.
Lose track.
I know.
I would move for approval of the bid con, oh, hold on, I started reading the wrong one, which is the same pretty much. Discuss, good night. Okay, I would move for approval for the bid contract for chip sealing the Iron County Fairgrounds and approve Spencer Asphalt to get that bid in the amount of $8,883.
I would second that.
It's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, Dane.
Thanks, Dane.
11.
Get out of here now.
Back door, go dig a hole.
Go back to work. Think he's gonna go.
11, approval of a bid contract for civil engineering services for a new sheriff's complex.
So this is a holdover from the previous meeting. We had opened those bids right in the meeting and, and the commissioners wanted to have a little more time to look at them. After having looked at them, we felt like both companies are very reputable. They're known to pretty much all of us that are under consideration. And we felt like the one might've been a little low on their price. Platt had bid 15,350. And then Watson, we thought maybe was a little bit high at 75,700. One of the tricky things with this RFP was scope. Because it is the, the sheriff's complex, we're talking about big, heavy structures, we're talking about a three-story annex. And so the scope might've been a little bit difficult to pin down from a bidding perspective. That being said, Platt came in at 15,350 and Watson was at 75,700. We figure that the total cost will probably be in the neighborhood of 50,000 after, after visiting about it and visiting with some of the experts that we have. And so that's, that's kind of my presentation for you.
Okay. Do we need to motion on it? I would move for approval of the bid contract for civil engineering services for the new sheriff's complex with Platt and Platt, 15,350, with knowing that it would probably be more than that. He didn't bid all the different aspects.
Second.
It's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We now need to convene is Iron County Community Development and Renewal Agency. And we'll go to number 12, consideration of cost reimbursement agreement for RWE Solar Development LLC. Danny Stewart.
He got to wait too.
I did. And I may have looked engaged in discussion of item number one, but I was doing other stuff. No, thank you. Both items 12 and 13 are similar in nature. These are both cost reimbursement agreements as we have done in the past concerning legal services for solar projects that are interested in developing here. We've contracted in the past with the developers of these projects and Smith Hartfixen, which is Adam Long's company. So that the developer pays the county, the legal bills the county and where, and those payments are made with that deposit, which is made by the developers. So that's what we're looking at here for items 12 and 13 is cost reimbursement agreement that the developers will pay the county so that the county can pay for the legal service with those funds. Just a little bit about these projects, just so you're aware, this is very preliminary, so I don't have tons of details on these. But the first one, number 12, RWE Solar Development, this proposed project would be 115 megawatt solar farm of AC that's generating AC plus a battery energy storage system. They're looking at investing roughly 393 and a half million in this project. The other one.
In batteries? Wow.
In the entire project.
Right. That's the panels and the batteries?
And the batteries and all the infrastructure, the inverters and everything else.
What's the percentage of batteries versus a solar panel?
They didn't give me a percentage on this one.
Just curious because that must take some massive batteries to store what they want to store, right?
It, it is. And they're, they're still holding out on the technology for those batteries to see. So we don't have the percentage on, on that, but.
Just curious.
And aren't there some of our existing ones that they want to also eventually convert to battery storage?
Yeah, we've had past ones that have put that in their plan and they've got the land and everything for that, but they haven't started that yet. I think the one that will happen first would probably be Appaloosa, which is the one under construction currently. And then anyway, there are several that have that provision and these do as well. And that would be located west of the Dutch Cowboy Farm, just north of Paragona. So the name that they've given that is the Dutch Cowboy Solar Project. The other one is, is called Perwin Solar. It's near the Utah Red Hills project. It's smaller. It's 58 megawatt project, anticipating 58 megawatts of battery storage for that one. I don't have the figures as far as investment, but this is what we have. These are very preliminary. They just want to get the ball rolling and start that cost reimbursement agreement as step one for them as they start looking at feasibility and moving forward with those.
I'll entertain.
You say that was west of the existing Perwin?
I just have adjacent to is the, the information that I've received. So I haven't seen a map on it yet.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for number 12.
We need to do those separate?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'd move for approval of a cost reimbursement agreement for RWE Solar Development LLC.
Second.
It's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 13.
I would move for approval of the cost reimbursement, reimbursement, reimbursement agreement for Perwin Solar LLC. And did you say that was Dutch Cowboy?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
All, okay, move a second at all in favor?
It was Perwin Solar.
Sorry, Perwin, I'm sorry.
It is just Perwin.
Perwin Solar is the second one.
Okay. Okay, that's, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll reconvene as Iron County Commission.
Okay, thanks.
And number 14, review and possible approval of land acquisition from Eneek City. This meeting may be closed. So let's put that, should we move that to the end?
Yeah, let's do our.
Yeah, let's just go to personnel. And then we'll come back to that.
If you feel like you need to close it, I mean, do we need to?
I don't know. Do you think we need to?
It seems straightforward to me, but I don't know if they're.
Who's going to talk about it?
I'm not prepared to talk about it.
Who put it on? I don't know.
I presume it's for the CJC. Sam, are you?
Nope, you don't know anything either.
We've already memorialized the agreement with the land with the CJC, so.
Let me, you know what, let me, let me scroll down here.
While you're doing that, let's let Jennifer go and then we'll.
And then we'll decide what we need to do.
You bet. Hello. In the sheriff's office corrections, Sam Smith has completed all tasks required to be promoted from a corrections deputy two to a corrections deputy three effective June 25th, 2023. Avery Shumway has completed all tasks required to be promoted from a corrections deputy one to a corrections deputy two effective June 25th, 2023. Trevor McNeil was selected from an internal recruitment and selection process to receive a promotion from a corrections corporal to a corrections sergeant effective June 25th, 2023. In the sheriff's office patrol, Tristan Roman was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and selection process to backfill the vacant full-time deputy one position effective August 28th, 2023. In the road department, Gavin Black was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and selection process to backfill the vacant maintenance, maintenance worker effective 6/12/2023. In the tourism parks department, Kaden Dalton was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the vacant seasonal outdoor maintenance technician position effective June 3rd, 2023. Council on Aging Department, Matsumi Hargit, Hargit, I apologize, was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and selection process to backfill the vacant part-time Perwin Activities Director position effective June 26th, 2023. In the landfill, Brian Harmer was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and selection process to backfill the vacant full-time landfill technician position effective June 26th, 2023. And then in the Burl Newcastle Fire, Fire Department, Lane Peterson was selected as the new part-time.
Was that Lane Anderson?
Lane Anderson. What did I say? Did I say Peterson?
Well, because the, the old one was Peterson.
I love that.
Works.
It worked.
I put that completely wrong. You know what I mean? Was selected as the new part-time Burl Newcastle Fire Station Captain position effective June 26th, 2023. And then the last on the agenda is for the fleet department. And I know Terry talked about this a little bit during his departmental breakdown. Sorry, I'm skipping ahead. That's the building department. Let's go back to the fleet. Kyle Dover and David Utley were selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and selection process to backfill the vacant full-time fleet assistant mechanic positions effective July 10th, 2023. One is going to be a backfill vacant position and the other one is going to be a new position. And then we'll go back to the building department.
Um, and then we'll go back to the Building Department. Um, Terry Palmer was, has requested the job description, um, to be updated for Nate Dennett to include some backup managerial responsibilities in his absence. Um, and his job description remains the same, basically, except for a couple of different caveats that, that will require some more step up in case he needs to be called upon.
And I don't know, Terry talked to us about that this morning, I think before you came in.
Yeah, he, he mentioned that to me, and I do have the job descriptions if you want to look them over. Um, Terry looked it over last night and told me that it was a, a, a go as far as what he wants for his department, but you're, I can give those to you if you'd like those as well.
Well, and on Wade's too, going back to Fleet.
Yes.
You know, Wade is, they're doing a great job. Wade is just overwhelmed with, with trying to balance everything, and with one mechanic, he was struggling, and so as a comm, as a commission, we, you know, Wade approached me initially and asked if he could have another, you know, employee to help. And I said, hey, as long as, as long as it, you know, the return on investment is such that we can pay for it, and, and I, I'm convinced that we can with the work they're doing in-house, and, and, uh, so I think that'll be a great.
Doing all their oil changes and all that, so.
Even some pretty complicated mechanic stuff for, for vehicles, and so I feel good about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
All right.
Both interviewed incredibly well. We had a great interview process with, with the Fleet Department.
Good.
Yeah, that's great.
That's good news. I'll bet Wade was happy then.
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
I'm going to move for approval of, uh, personnel items A through I as outlined by Jennifer.
And I would second that.
It's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. I should have brought my stamp today. I can tell already.
It's gonna require one. More for you in a minute, so.
Okay, what? So what, what'd you find out, John?
Uh, it, it's not in the packet, and, uh, my chief deputy is on vacation.
So we will.
Wait.
We will vote. Maybe somebody could make a motion to table that one?
I'll, I'll move to table it.
Yeah, okay, I'll second it.
As long as I've got my mouth open.
I'll second it.
I'll move to table item, what number was that?
Fourteen.
Number fourteen.
Okay, and it's been moved in second to table that, that issue until we find out what we're voting on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, boards, have we got anything? I think there was a question on the one, but we resolved that, so.
Resolved, yeah.
Uh, any other boards or things, discussion?
We're good.
Not, little adjourned this meeting, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to point out that we got the bulk of the calendar done in fifty minutes.
Yeah, well, it didn't.